We're going to call this meeting of the trustees' workshop in May thirteenth, twenty twenty four. Citizens may comment on items appearing on the agenda when invited to participate during that agenda item by the board chair. Citizens may comment on items related to school district business not appearing on this agenda during the public comment portion of the meeting. So citizens after identifying themselves will proceed to my comments as briefly as the subject permits. Basic rules of decorum are in effect at all times. The chairperson may interrupt or terminate an individual's statement when appropriate, including when statements are out of order, to lengthy breach of personal privacy rights, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or otherwise. The public should realize that this is a trustee business meeting conducted in a public forum. We'll stand before the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
When we have no one signed up for for a public commentary, so we'll go right on to the first topic, library team presentation.
Chris is here for moral support. In case you guys don't know, this is Chris Keller, our other teacher librarian, and I'm Nikki Williams. Okay, let's start with just some statistics of this year. So so far, our average daily checkouts are is about a hundred and twenty books a day. Average checkouts per month is about twenty four hundred and our school year checkout so far, we're at nineteen thousand two hundred, not counting today. This was beginning of the year until last Friday. And that's not include the walking books, which are the missing books that say they're here, but they're actually not, or they're hidden somewhere because the kids like, I don't know if you've ever gone to Target or something, they're like, that's cute, I'll come back later. Not that I would have ever done that, but I'm just saying sometimes they hide things and then they want to come back and get that book later. So there's much, many more out there. Our current overdues are six hundred and sixty six. I don't know if that's simpleman or what, but are currently books currently in our book hospital, which are books needing repair. We have forty seven needing repair. At any given time, I would say, depending on how busy we are, we're going to have about that many to a hundred, fifty to a hundred that we need to get fixed. They are, they're well-loved books and always the favorites get ruined first. It seems like as soon as we get a brand new book, that one gets ruined right away. But which is a good thing also because the kids love the book so hard that they come back and they're like constantly having to repay, place them or fix them. And we have repaired over three hundred and fifty books so far this year. We try to keep track of that, but it's hard. So I know that it's much higher. And what we've been really working hard on the past couple of years is making our library much more kid-friendly. So I just think of it like kids versus Dewey. So the Dewey Decimal System is great in many regards, but this is the kids' library. So doesn't matter how often we try to teach that system and how to find books, they're just not how their brain works. So things that we've done is updating how we categorize the books. So seven, four, one point five is graphic novels, and I'm starting to change them just to GN because GN stands for graphic novels. And E in our call numbers is everybody books, which are picture books. And I'm just like, let's just spell it out. Everybody, everybody books is a picture book. A lot of our books say F for fiction and it doesn't matter how many times we taught them, we still have eighth graders coming in here going, I'm looking for this book, the call number is F. And we're like, no, it's not. What is the whole call number? It's it's just, we're like, no, F is for fiction. Now look below that. So just slowly changing them all to say F I C. L R is for leveled readers, so the little cute left part based on beginning readers levels. We have tried to take all of those and put them in their very own bins or the purple cart with a picture of what they are, the category in them. So they're all forward-facing and they're not even spying out on a shelf for little kids and they just go straight for that. We're keeping all nonfiction Dewey Decimal, but I'm starting to add NF in front of it just because, again, doesn't matter how many times we teach, like, what do nonfiction books call numbers have? And we're like, no, and they're like, nonfiction NF. And we're like, okay, we'll just change it to NF because that's what they think is there. And trying to take decimal points, oh, decimals away from the Dewey Decimal. So it, for example, pets is six, three, six, and then dogs are six through six point seven and cats are six through six point eight. But instead of having like six, three, six point seven, seven, five is a tabby cat or whatever, we're just doing either one decimal point or no decimal points. And then updating the catalog records so that when they search for a book, a lot of time in library language, it will just show up as like the subtitle instead of the series. And so I've been trying to go back and as soon as they search something, what pops up is what they would be thinking of, what it would be in their head, like Warrior Cats, instead of just like the title of Into the Forest. And they're like, I didn't know that was a Warrior Cat book because it did say Warrior Cats on there. And then just updating the spine labels to show that as well. And also the dynamic shelving is what it's called. So basically making it kid-friendly for kids to be able to find their own books without having to come to a library and show them where it is. And that includes finding it after seeing it in the online catalog and just browsing. So one of the things that Tony, our, because I'm one of maintenance at all guy, did for us was he built us Plexiglas displays for our magazines. They used to be in a wooden tall case, but kids couldn't see the covers. So having them just full view and all along that colorful word wall, they've been circulated much more. And magazines are really awesome for like reluctant readers also, especially the hunting magazines. They, the boys literally fight over them. And I figured out one day it was because they had like a, like a a lottery ticket you could fill out and send it in to, you know, to hunt a certain type in like, I don't know, Kentucky or something. And they were like, just, just really wanted to get that. But the other thing is I took a picture of the Babysitters Club bin here. We have lots of bins that we bought. And I had the old from when I was a kid, Babysitters Club books. And the Babysitters Club just came out with graphic novels, so they've been really popular. But I've been trying to get them to transition over to the chapter book, but they didn't want to because the covers were old and ugly. So the combination of buying the new updated covers, the kid-friendly covers, and then putting them in that forward-facing bin, they've really been, been checked out now. So anything we can do, and these are the leveled readers that I was talking about, for especially the real young kids like the kindergartners, they don't have to look for anything, they just go and pick one. School Library Journal puts out every year the average book prices and for twenty twenty three, from children's up to young adult, which is sixth to eighth grade, the average fiction paperback is twelve dollars and six cents. The average hardcover is twenty dollars and eighteen cents, and the nonfiction hardcovers were about twenty three dollars and five cents per book. And this is also from the School Library Journal from last school year, just a pie chart of average nationwide school library spending and where their money comes from. You can see that most of it is just their allocated library budget. For us, we had to rely heavily on our Scholastic Book Fair. This year, we made eleven thousand two hundred and thirty dollars, which I choose to get fifty percent Scholastic dollars, which means we have to buy just solely from their site. If I ask for cash, I get a quarter cash, so I'm twenty five percent cash. And so I was able to get about two hundred and eighty books from their site this year. And I also applied for and was awarded two grants this year. Wirehauser gave us a thousand and Applied Materials, we got twenty five hundred. These were mainly for nonfiction or STEM-related books. And I have not had time to actually do those orders. I've been working on it, so. And we also rely very heavily on donations. We, I did a GoFundMe last year for a book covering machine and covers, which I think was about eighteen hundred. And that has saved us a tremendous amount of time. It takes about thirty seconds to cover a book versus average of, what do you say, like, I would say at least five minutes.
At least five minutes depending on the book size.
Yeah, as our old, and we still cover books with the different ways, but this is a lot of time. PTO has helped people out with buying book covers, books, and then we put out Amazon Wish List. We get some from there, but not very many. I would say less than fifteen and then use book donations. This is the most recent School Library Journal nationwide average for school libraries spend about seventy five hundred dollars a year, which is about twelve dollars per student. Last year, we were given seventy five hundred, which is about ten dollars per student. And this year, we went all the way down to twenty eight, twenty five, which is about three dollars and seventy six cents per student, which is way low. And we've relied really heavily on those donations and the grants. But the grant thing is not really sustainable because that took a lot of my time that I was doing on the weekends during movie night. I was just doing that and trying to get money. And that can't continue either because we're running out of grant funding sources. Locally, they tend to give us more money than all the other competitive grants out there. This is my final slide. I'm worried about next year because even though we're getting Chris back, Chris was mostly teaching social studies this year and it was all me teaching library except he did teach third grade this year. The proposed schedule is we're adding sixth grade to just library specials load. And we, we are at K five right now for scheduled library classes. We're going to go to schedule to have K six every day. Possibly and probably doubling up at least three grade levels of classes a day is what I'm told. Nothing's final. So I've heard at least threes, and I don't know what grade level, earlier elementary, which means about ten or more classes a day that are in here for us to teach, which is about thirty plus question mark classes total in under our charge. And then I'm guessing six hundred or more-ish students that Chris and I are going to have. And plus all of our librarian duties. So all of this, I'm just making you aware of because I don't know how much you guys know about the library world as a board. And don't forget about us. And just when you're thinking about budgets or us in our own little island that we're still here. And I take it, I feel flattered that people are like, oh, I have no idea how much you guys do because it says to us that we're not floundering, obviously, we're floundering like in our own, in our own way. People are like, they seem to have it together, but we do need your support and help. So just, just keep that in mind, please. And then I found that, which is kind of what it feels like this year. Because we're fine, we got our coffee at least. So anything I overlooked or you want to say?
All right, thank you.
Do you have any questions? Or comments? Well, thanks for listening.
Thank you. We'll go on to other review of the twenty-nine dash two point four MCA and discussion of the proposed twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school fees, Mark.
All right. So in the past, we've talked about the subject of school fees, right? So you've got your, that's your regular budget. We now, in the next couple of weeks, will be able to figure out exactly what our levy funds are going to look like, additional levy funds. And then we need to think about what we're going to do relative to school fees. School fees fall into a variety of different categories. And what I wanted to do today with Richard is just tee this thing up so we can start thinking about it and talking about it. Maybe talking about it more specifically during June meeting and then thinking about how we incorporate this, these fees into our overall budget approval process during July and August. These, so the, the, the applicable code, Montana Code annotate is that twenty-nine dash two fourteen. So the board, the board has a link to that. So if you pop that open, it's pretty simple and straightforward. And it says that the board has the, the power to impose fees particularly in these areas. So I'll just read for the benefit of everybody who's attending. It's in the commercial industrial arts, music, domestic science. So that's the old home app, right? So we're calling that domestic science, scientific or agricultural courses to pay for reasonable fees to cover the actual cost of breakage and excessive supply used. So those are these academic classes. And in the past, we, we talked about, hey, you know, it's getting difficult for, just my background was in the science, middle, middle school science labs. It, it can take a thousand, two thousand dollars a year to have an experiential, hands-on-based science class for eighth grade, seventh and eighth graders. And that money was not in our budget this year, right? And so when you think about the class size, if it's just under a hundred, you know, you can think about what a science would be. And I'm just growing down to that one specifically, but these are categories to think about. People have talked, talked about, well, if that's a required class, you know, how fair is it to, to impose a fee? Well, how, you know, if you can afford to have, if you want to have an experiential class, it costs money. So one way or the other, that's what we want to do. We're going to have to figure out how we can get money to fund those types of activities. The code here sort of gives you some directions to think about art is, art and music are both electives next year. Science, there are some technical electives. There are also some required science classes, but I wanted to get the board thinking about this code as it relates to the areas that we can consider fees, imposing fees to cover the cost of the type of education that we want to offer for our community. So let me stop there. Any questions on these? These are sort of, that's sort of the academic piece of this whole thing.
Do we have like a list or like a sheet anywhere of like what we charge for different activities, classes, et cetera?
Right now, we charge nothing for class fees.
So like for any class?
Any class, any class. We do not let, we do not impose any, any fees. That's a great segue, though. Any other questions on that?
What other schools do you know?
It's a mixed bag. It's a mixed bag. Yeah. Some schools don't even offer highly experiential science, technical STEM experiences for their school, for their, for their kids. So again, it kind of gets at the core of what our mission is here, the strategic plan and all that. So just want to get people cooking on, on the academic side of this thing. And then what Laurel said, I think for the next meeting, what I'd love to is to print out, so what are fees now? Now you cast the net a little bit wider and talk about fees in total. So when you look at the list of fees, the list of fees that I put on the agenda here, there's lunch fees. Lunch fees have not increased in quite a while, and there's a formula that OPI gives us. And I owe, that's some homework for me to bring it to the board and say, hey, here's what our current lunch fee is. Here's what we're allowed to have. And then here's really what the funding landscape looks like for us. We're losing federal, federal funding in our, in our kitchen. We've had over seven thousand dollars in grants this year for milk purchases in particular. We had, we had additional training grants carried over from the prior year. So there was over ten thousand dollars in grants. We need to think about that, right? So I mean, you've got a lot of positive feedback on your, on your kitchen. Jeff is, I mean, amazed. I think he's doing a fantastic, when, when an eighth grade boy likes what he's eating for lunch, you know, something's going right up there, right? So, so I think they're doing a great job. We just need to think about what that's going to look like. The, the important thing to keep in the back of your mind is if you can't cover your budget out of your food services fund, you have to fund it out of your general fund. And, you know, I know we're, we'll talk about where we are with these levy elections. And some good news, but we're still not flush with cash and we won't be for, for a while. So, so I'm going to think, so lunch fees is an area. And I, and so I think Laurel, so if we're talking, this is just talk right now. It's like, hey, it'd be a good idea to get a list. Charge me with that and then, you know, that, that type of stuff.
Now, what is our budget shortfall going into next year for, for lunch?
For food services? I don't know yet. It's a, it's a good question. I know we're, we're, we're teed up to lose as much as twenty thousand dollars in sort of state, state and federal funding. And so those types of numbers I need to kind of solidify. We've been fortunate because we applied for a grant and other schools didn't pick up their portion of the grant. And I said, oh, we'll have some more of that. And they gave us another fifteen hundred dollars at the end. So you kind of have to wait till it, it will land it in June, but I think that'll be a good time to start quantifying. Good, good questions.
Is there a lot, I guess, a question on how, how is the federal money connected to lunch program? Do they have guidelines that we have to follow concerning the?
That's, yeah, that's a piece of OPI. The, the feds donate food. Sometimes they'll say, hey, we've got eight million pounds of turkey, you know, Turkey, Turkey Month or whatever, whatever they do. They say, hey, we've got, you know, beets and kids are like, oh, great beets, whatever. But whatever they come up with, if it gets donated, then Jeff tries to plan a menu around that.
Isn't that how we have sugar breakfast too? Like some of the sugary items and things like?
Could be.
I remember complaining to you about some of the breakfast offerings and Richard was like, well, that's because it's like free. Yeah, it's like what they put on the truck and it's what's available to us. So, you know.
And I hear pizza, pizza is a vegetable these days. I don't know how that, that's a classification, that's. But so, so yeah, there's the lunch fee portion and I owe you some homework and say, hey, here's where we are. Here's how long it's been since we've had an increase and here's what we're allowed to do. What do we think makes sense out of this? And remember, then we still have free and reduced, we have free lunches, free meals, reduced meal, and then we also have full rides.
Those are stuff from invited bed, right?
Yes.
It's not going to all be in the overall picture, right?
What's that?
It'll all be in the overall picture.
Yeah, it's, it's a big soup. And it's, it's a little bit of a guessing game too, because you don't know what percentages you're going to get, right? So right now, we're about thirty percent reduced, but that's a blend of free and reduced.
Do we, do we know what budget teachers have in mind for certain classes? Like is their ideal, their ideal budget to properly run a class? Like, do we know what those numbers are for like music, art, science? Do we have that from them?
I think so.
Okay.
It ranges. When I was with the science group, it was, we had a spreadsheet for sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade lined up at discovery. And here are the, here are the units you're testing. Here's what, here's the investments you make for multi-years. Here's your consumables. We had it very, very detailed. Other places, I, I don't know, where it's just been given, we just live off of what we got. So it's, it's a range.
And with music, it's more about replacement of broken or damaged items, which we really don't have anything right now. With that, including tech, there's really no teeth in it. Someone doesn't pay or something.
Right. Yeah, I guess I, I'm just curious about like, is there a way to possibly get kind of like a, I mean, obviously not pie in the sky, right? But like, what, what do they need to properly run a class? Is it possible to get that breakdown of expenses from them?
You've got about minimum.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, and maybe not even minimum, but just like where they feel like they're turning out a good quality education, but they're not going hog wild with an ask, you know? I mean, we could have them identify minimum and I guess, like moderate.
So what I'm going to put in here, Laurel's understood trustee Eckern requested a list of current fees and estimates from teachers. Is that fair?
Yeah.
During the budget process for desired funding, okay?
Be nice to know which ones are electives and which ones are not electives and required, like if we can have that differentiation too.
That's what, when you, when you get in, when you talk to the teachers, that, you know, if you're saying, well, I don't know if that's really fair, if that's a required class. Can you, you know, so that's where we may have to lean heavier on the general fund. But if it's art or, or music and that's an elective, is it pay to play? And that's really a philosophy for the school, for the board and you guys. I want to put it up front so you can start thinking about it because it's going to be a soup, right? We're going to put all the stuff in the budget. We're going to look it up and we're going to say, I'd really like to have another pair. Well, I'd like to, you know, do this, I'd like to, so it's going to be a bunch of trade-offs for whatever.
And right now, we don't serve, we don't charge any fees for class. The only fees we charge are for athletics.
Which brings us to the next thing. So right, so we've got lunch fees, you've got athletic fees, that's another one. And I can show you what is our current fees do versus, we don't fund, coaches come out of the general fund, so the fees don't apply to that. But you know, that's really one for your athletic director to say here, we need new football companies or we need uniforms or whatever we're going to do. We use COVID funds in the past for some of these athletic investments. And so, so, yeah. So athletic is another one.
Facilities rental is a big one too.
Facilities rentals, right? So we rent out our gym to whoever wants to have, if they're, so, so how much do we charge? And it's a bargain, I think, I would, I'm going to guess we're losing money.
We are losing, sure.
Versus what we're doing for custodial services and graduating.
How much do we charge for the gym?
I think it's between fifty and seventy-five dollars really, so it doesn't even pay. I mean, it hasn't been updated in a long time.
So that's just for, for the use of the gym, say, for two hours in the evening or?
Yeah, for private clubs using on the weekends a lot too, when it gets heavy.
Do we have to have a custodian or somebody on site when they're here? No?
Yeah. The last area to think about is we talked tonight more about the tech levy is computer and tech insurance and fees around that. What do you do to replace Chromebook batteries that are out of life? I, it, there doesn't, a month doesn't go by when I don't pay a bill for Chromebook battery replacement. There's no budget for that, but we're using it. And so how do we pay for that? So those, these are the areas I think we've got to really sort of hunker down on, take a look at these, these.
Were they, were they considered in the, the tech proposals that Kat gave us? Did, was that, was that kind of stuff included in there? The Chromebook batteries, I mean, I'm saying because she gives some idea for that tech levy of what we need, were batteries included in that?
That's a tricky one. Actually, I think, I'll jump ahead a bit. So what I saw was something that looked like here's a plan, an aggressive plan and not so aggressive plan for replacing Chromebooks. If we got the tech fund that we're after. So we kind of did a best case, worst case scenario, you know, how, how would you do that over the course of ten years? Or then, then you get back in lifetimes and all that stuff. Then, and when, you know, you ask, well, what, what, what do you want? Well, it's kind of a, kind of wanting a clapping, you know? So, and so when Richard and I talked to Kat, we said, well, what could you do for five thousand dollars a year? Right? What, what could you do? What, you know, what percentage you, so that's kind of where we are with the, with the budgeting type of thing is we look at carving out pieces of the general fund. But this, this is, this is one of.
I think the biggest focus on that tech thing was more around everything's online for testing. Like we were more worried about making sure we had testing covered than anything else.
So things like batteries for Chromebooks would come out of the general fund, it's repair and maintenance.
Well, it could come up, yeah, the, the tech, man, wouldn't it be nice to have a tech fund though? Because in order to do your online testing, I hope you have a computer, the battery works.
Yeah, exactly.
So, so, and if we don't get that tech fund levy, then where are we going to go? You could take it out of the general fund, but man, there's going to be a long line of people wanting that, any money for that, that election result.
Last year, Kat, I thought maybe it was she had done some kind of proposal to us about buying insurance. Did we ever, is that going on? Pretty sure because I paid for it.
Yeah, she has a fee in there. That one needs a policy wrapped around it, to be honest with you. So, yeah, it's not mandatory and it, you know, when I It's not mandatory and it, you know, when I get them, I, I, I code them and put them either in our flex fund or in our tech fund. Are, are they required? Are they not required? What does it really buy you? As a parent, I think I might have some questions. But it'd be good to have a policy wrapped on that. So a fair amount of work to do here. Wasn't looking for decisions tonight, but more sort of awareness and conversation on the world, exactly what you're doing. Hey, hey, give me this so I can talk, you know, so I can understand more. So.
And I'm writing down everything we're talking about.
We have to, and we can, we can plow it back into work session next time too. We don't have to do.
It'd be nice to have all the athletics, kind of everything on the table. Computer, that, what's a whole, everything looks like.
Yeah, rather than like, oh, forgot about this in August. Oh, come on, let's, yeah. So what does a parent really look, look, looking at?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the hard thing that we're up against is like the amount that we went to the community for in levy was not to get us to a robust position. It was to cover like the bare minimum. And so we're still gonna be scrambling to a certain extent to kind of figure out how do we cover all of this stuff.
So as a finance teacher, you know, you're gonna say, hey, uh, give me two grand, I'll give you a, amazing. Yeah, it's a, a, a pretty rich experience to learn. Give me nothing. I find we just don't want to do that. What? It's not okay to prep for high school.
Well, a hundred percent. I mean, if we look at what the requirements are for high school science, it's so lab-based, it's so hands-on. They're wanting all of these, you know, in-depth reports. And if kids can't perform that because they're not getting the experience, then we haven't prepared them adequately. I know this is probably a little bit off subject, but in the voag realm of things, I know like at the high school, those high school kids love that voag option. And I don't know, I'm sure we're a ways from that, but it would be nice to have an elective that would be like a voag, like researching that piece, you know, for the middle school. I mean, I don't even know if it's an option, if we can use the voag.
Oh, can we use it?
I mean, not you, but like to do something there.
Excentric here though. I, I mean, I remember when I joined the staff and I was like, what do I teach for elective? It's up to you. And you know, as long as it's relevant. So there was a history of a rocket rally here and then I taught. Sort of intro to engineering is what it was. But, but you could say, hey, you could do, you, you, you could, you could throw in a voag.
It would be really nice to give them the option, even if they have to pay a fee to be able to do it as an elective.
What do you have in mind for that?
I just know like in high school, I mean, that was a huge thing. I think it still is a huge thing.
We don't have wood shop, we don't have metalwork and we don't have any, but you could say that, that's, that if, if we really want, if that's something the community wants, then we could figure that out and see what we could do. But that might be fee oriented too.
Right.
It's since we've thrown it all out on the table.
I think it would be nice to know. I think our community would like it. Yeah. It'd be interesting to have a conversation though, like with Brian Day or someone at the Ag Center. I don't know if Brian's even still there or not.
Yes, he is.
He was kind of the hallmark for a long time. Um, but like about what's, what the logistics or something like that are. It's like in terms of animal husbandry or taking care of them properly, what's the cost? What's facilities look like? I mean, cause I'm sure there's gotta be a way we could have even some sort of like entry level bare bonesy.
Yeah.
Kind of look at it.
Who would be teaching that?
We're brainstorming off of that. I think it would be well received. Well, and it engages the different demographic of kids that sometimes aren't always engaged in education.
Talk about, you know, she talks about the hunting magazines. It's the same idea when you talk about the voag kid. Yeah.
Good. So what I, what I'm doing, I'll just capture this as trustee Eckern uh, requests a list of current fees and estimates from teachers during the budget for desired funding. Um, trustee Hanson asked to, asked of the board should consider voag offerings and, and how the school, how the school might fund this type of offering and what facilities might be used, something like that, just to capture those.
And is there other electives that we're missing on that middle school side to like attract kids to, you know, that middle school? I mean, I know we've had some kids leave the middle school. Like, is there anything else, I guess, that we're missing in that middle school?
As part of our overall middle school discussion that we. That would be a big part of the talk.
I think facilities are also pretty tough. Cause if you talk about like where would be put a wood shop, right?
Yeah, and I don't know what other electives are out there for middle school, but just, oh, we, is there anything else out there that's being offered that we're?
One thing is that there was a high school, I, I tried Duck Town before I switched, switched in this role as a project leader way. So there are biomedical research, so pre-med type of things. And there's, there's middle school level intros to those. So Boyer has Project Lead the Way, Whitefish has Project Lead the Way. Seaford does not yet. But that, that kind of, you know, if you coordinate with the high school and give them sort of a runway into some of those career path things, you could do, but you know, teach, somebody has to write grants and that, that, there's a bunch to get into that stuff. But so the short answer is yes, there's other ones and they're structured, but it could be more structured or less structured. All right. Did that capture your follow-up? And I'm thinking we should probably tee up please again for another uh, work session.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have the background on them all.
Yeah, and I think it'll help us sort of make some decisions about what, what's in and what's out of the general fund next year too. It gets easy after this, I think. And so, so we still have information. So this is just discussion topic. This is just informational. It's more of a one-way street. Um, just so you guys know, um, all of the software programs that we have here have, have what's called a D P A or data privacy agreement associated with it. So that it protects, it guarantees the company that, that, that develops the software guarantees that our children's uh, information is safe. And so, um, we've got Mobi Max, Discovery Ed, Star Phone, their pod and World Book. So basically what Kat goes off and works with, is it, is it, who's it, M T S B, M T S B A that gets these things? These are um, like a twelve to fifteen page document. If you really wanna stay up at night, like let's start reading one of these things. She brings them in, I, Sharon, Marilyn and, and Richard, we make sure we got ourselves covered. We sign those things and just tell you guys, and so this puts it on the record that we've got these things in place. There'll probably be another ten more of these things coming. Just want, want you guys to know that. And of course we've got D P As. You have this boilerplate stuff that we need to have. It's part of our business. Next thing is audit plans. So there's a governance letter. So if you guys wanna pop open the, the two-page governance letter there. It's audit season and based on what's happened here at um, West Valley in term, mostly because of staff. We're at the end of the audit cycle for um, that we, that does our audits. So if you look at the letterhead, it says it's from Denning Downing and Associates. We're in a five-year contract with these guys to do our, um, audit of our financial systems. And part of, part of the, part of their boilerplate work is they send something to Richard and he says, hey, um, we're officially your auditors. Here's when we think the audit's gonna start and here's what is included in the audit that you're, that you're gonna have. Our head lead auditor is, is a woman named Angela Holmes. You see her signature down at the bottom and she's been in contact with me. Um, they, they're actually already requesting information for next year's audit, for about this year. Um, so in the past month, I put over a thousand pages of backup information together for these guys. And in my experience, these are fairly in-depth, detailed audits for the size and complexity of what's going on here. But there, something is required for public institutions. Business managers meeting tomorrow. And this is another topic, uh, but why don't you guys do see this? Um, basically some takeaways here is that the audit is, they've started on there. And so we spent a lot of time. There was stuff when I walked into this role that was past due for them prepping for this audit. And so it took me a while to get around to that. That's why we've been pushed to the end of the audit cycle. And then in the last month, that's where I put together another thousand pages of stuff. They, they asked for examples and exhibits of, hey, show us uh, these bills that you paid in three different categories, um, random material to your results and then um. Rank ordered by amount. So there are three different categories and we give all the backup and everything we do to track, to approve and track um, our expenditures here. So it started, it's going on right now. Um, and then by before June thirtieth, they'll have the results. I review the results with you. Another thing we've noticed is that really, really these should be posted on our website. Um, they have not been posted since two thousand nineteen. And so, um, it's public record, right? And so you guys will all get a hard copy and then there should be publicly available electronic copy that we'll post there. And so they usually, the last time we had four findings, we'll come back and address those findings. Some are gonna be repeat findings. And um, the one on fund balancing that I've talked to the board about, that's gonna be the subject of a recommendation I'm gonna have for structure within my role or who, what are the capabilities that we have at the school for um, accounting and fund balancing. Um, uh, because we just keep seeing the same, um, that's seeing the same. Finding coming out of the audits and it's, we've, we've gotta address it. We, we can't just, it's, other schools have more staff dealing with this and we're gonna have to figure out how to put more person hours available to, to some of this. Yeah, so there is.
What about that COVID money? Um, you know, you, you mentioned that now the federal is coming down on us for wanting to have um, better accountability to where we spend it. Does the, does the audit address that too?
Good question. So one of the audit findings last year was that there was a little over thirty thousand dollars back in two thousand twenty-one. It was not spent in, before December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-one. And this came, and this came from what's called the C R F, the Corona Relief Funds. That was a, that was a federally originated, state-administered group of fund. There are layers within this COVID thing. So that, that the C R F was really sort of state-led. And then S R funds, if you hear S R, that is, there are three levels of S R funds that we're all getting out of. The C R F funds um, is one of our findings and they said, hey, you guys didn't spend it, which means uh, tech and, and time, which technically means you need to go figure out what happened in two thousand twenty-one or before then. And uh, and whether you need to give that money back to the, back to the state. Um, that's part of what I'm doing with Cindy this week, next week, in the following week, before she gets out of here. We'll get as far as I can with Cindy. Uh, because really, so what I was trying to do is get a clean starting point on all of our funds. That was what Cindy was trying to do. And she's doing about what we thought was gonna happen. She's gonna get close and make a lot of project, progress, but not get everything resolved. So I'm gonna need a little more help. We'll talk about what that's gonna look like down there. But uh, she, uh, out of that, our auditor is gonna ask again this year. And she says, well, what's the state telling you? Do you need to give that money back? And so we have, in that portion of miscellaneous fund, that's where we park our grant money. We have about sixty-seven thousand dollars to be good right now. But if you take that thirty out, you know, so we could give it back. But the question is, do we, do we have, do we, that's a question for our auditor, the state administrators, uh, and, and to, to, to figure out.
It won't affect that for us directly, then Mark?
The auditors, the auditor's position in generals, they, and that's part of the governance statement is, we're referees. We don't. Cause there's a conflict of interest, right? They, they, they can't, there's certain things they can't really get into and do for you. And that's the problem.
They can advise you maybe.
Well, they'll tell you what's not right.
Right.
And then it's, it's up to you to fix it. And so then, you know, I'll call the state and the state goes, we really, I don't want the money back. I mean, I, it's, we're not sure how you do, really have to talk to your auditor about how you reopen your books and do all the financial statements over again for the past three years. Now, you know, and that's when we get caught in these multi-week discussions that end up really dragging on. So right now, we're just trying to, trying to figure out, do we need to give that thirty grand back off our books? That doesn't affect the general fund. It's in one of the project reporter codes and the projects of miscellaneous thirty grand.
And is this related to like those new guidelines that came down of surprise, surprises? We're now asking you questions and like saying that we needed you to track stuff that we never gave the guidance on in the first place?
It's, it's not the same. It's similar to, the, the, this one was more about a, hey, you should have spent this money before a certain date. You didn't, therefore, you know, it, do you need to give it back?
Do we even know? Maybe we did spend it in time, but it just wasn't entered properly or in time?
Not, it's getting very difficult to untie right now because a lot is, yeah. So that's a, that's a very good question. So the, the, the one you're asking about is um, uh, people are coming back. Remember at the beginning, it's like, hey, people are panicking. We got COVID, but we've gotta keep schools going. Hey, here's a, a ton of money or a lot of money. Just keep schools going. And then it was all, make sure that it's in these categories. Well, within these categories, make sure that you assign specific, you know, uses. Well, make sure within those specific uses, you tell what the teacher was exactly and what they were doing and how it's related. And so it's changed over time. So people have spent money on sort of a general, hey, let's just keep things going. And now they're coming back asking very specific questions. That is actually not possible to answer right now. And that's where we're getting caught. And so, yeah, so it's not just us. It's the other schools. We're actually, we're not in bad shape. Some other schools are figures upside down in some of their funds because it is. It's, it's, it's not, not fun right now.
We gotta thank Mark uh, for all the time and energy he's putting in.
Yeah, this one, uh, yeah.
Frustrating situation.
Kind of. I think everyone learned that, that they don't wanna be COVID again, right? Yeah, it's, I mean, it was tough. Everyone was trying to do the best they could. And, you know, then keep schools running. And now people wanna know a lot of details. And it's, first of all, that was three years ago. And second of all, you know, now you're imposing requirements on, on the, on the reporting that you didn't, that you didn't ask for upfront. So literally our system's got just, it's just, it says you spent this much and I can get that. And what we wanna know, blind item by, like within overall, who you paid for.
Meanwhile, there's all the stuff that you have to take care of, the day-to-day things, this is like that. We'll get to it in a minute.
So, so this, this is kind of the kickoff. We're late in the season. Most schools already have, they've, they've done a couple, couple of months ago. And we'll, we'll just add this to our pile of stuff to do. So, so you guys will get report um, July.
Do we meet in July? Well, yeah, we're not going on previous precedent.
I don't, in general, in general, I, I probably, I think last July, you guys had like eight, eight or nine, I was at six or seven. Yes, I think, we'll probably have, we'll probably have one just because I miss, I miss you guys so much. I would say near the end of July, we'll probably get together. Your summer going on. Okay. So that's what I had for the work session stuff. I think what I'm getting is, we'll come back, there'll be more D P As. I know we'll do a rest on this. And then I, I think, hopefully we'll have some good dialogue and some discussion around um, putting these fees in context.
Thank you, Mark. More discussion on, on that. Well, we're about ten five. We could take a break um, before our five fifteen meeting. Take a little bit longer break.
Yep, Cal will be here at five thirty. And it sounds like Jeff is gonna make the main meeting. Yeah.
Better be here for Mark's and my big moment.
We don't need it. I'm all into adjournment.
And I'm gonna share that document with.
Going to begin the regular board meeting of West Valley School Board, May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Once again, we're gonna call to order citizens may call an item as appearing on the agenda when invited to participate during the, the agenda item by virtue. Citizens may comment on items related to school district business not appearing on this agenda during the public comment portion, meaning citizens after identifying themselves will proceed to make comments as briefly as the subject promotes. Basic rules of decorum are ineffective at all times. Chairperson may interrupt or terminate an individual statement when appropriate, including when statements are ordered to lengthy breach personal privacy rights, are abusive, obscene, irrelevant or otherwise. The public should realize that this is a trustee business meeting in a public forum. We'll stand for the. The United States of America and to the Republic of America for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yeah, um, we have nobody that's signed up to address the school board. We'll go on here, the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Any discussion? Right, all those, all those in favor of approving the agenda? Unanimous. Affirmation, uh, trustee election, Mark?
All right. So as everyone knows. All right, so as everyone knows, we have, we held a trustee election this year. And back in December, we opened up for candidates to declare their interest in the position. And we had two positions open and we had two. Uh, people, their candidacy. And so those folks, since we didn't receive any other ones, those, those two are Laura Echo and Mark Wadi. And they will be sworn in by Cal. Uh, at the, during our organizational meeting coming up here. So that election was canceled. And all the proper legal notifications were made in the paper. Uh, for us publicly to to do that. So congratulations to Laurel and Mark.
Great work for that.
Very much so.
Okay. So we're ready to go on to the next section, the canvas, the votes, Mark?
Yeah, so, so what, what, what Marilyn and I were talking about is for these, for these elections, you're supposed to have a separate section dedicated to your election results. Then in the same meeting, this is a BP meeting, we're doing a lot tonight. After this, we're gonna have an organizational meeting where the board structures itself for the next year. And then after that, we'll get into their traditional action items. Uh, so in this section, we did have levy elections. Uh, we held uh, uh, elections in the two areas, as everyone knows, for the general fund for three hundred forty seven thousand dollars. And the technology fund levy for eighty three thousand dollars. Uh, on Tuesday, May seventh, around ten thirty, I sent out, we had three judges. Uh, help us with the, with the trained judges, uh, help us count the votes. So that was Jane Wheeler and Dave Brewer and Michael Fraser. They came in and helped us do that that night. And what I'm gonna do is just run over what the results were. Um, and then, but the modified results are now that we've had all the provisional rules of ballots. Accounted for and then what the next steps are gonna be. And when I, after I do this, we'll cover the general fund levy first, that, that the board, the canvassing, this means that we go through the results with the board. And then the board decides if they want to make a motion and then second the motion to certify the election results that I'm gonna present. On Tuesday, um, May seventh, after, after we, we had the, we were the preliminary results. That were announced for the general fund levy that was nine hundred and seventy seven. Four and nine hundred and forty three against. Uh, that's a margin of thirty four votes. In total, we, we, we mailed out three thousand six hundred and thirty nine ballots were mailed out. Ballots that were returned at that time were one thousand nine hundred and twenty, twenty nine. And that's a fifty three per percent voter turnout. That was incredible. That was the highest of any district that I saw in the valley. Things were in general pretty high this time. Uh, in general, if you want, I got you, I got you. In general, across the, the valley, the voter turnout was pretty high on these. You saw a lot of them in the high forties and a couple of them in the low fifties. Uh, but from what I saw, I think we had the highest turnout, just by a couple of percentage points. Um, as I mentioned, we had a total of thirteen provisional ballots, provisional ballots mostly falling in the category. Of the elector failed to sign their, put their signature on the envelope when it was, when it was sent in or dropped off. Or the signature did not match what their signature was or the signature that was provided to me. From the county election department. And there's a variety of reasons why it might not have matched. A lot of times. The husband will sign for the wife and the wife will sign for the husband. A lot of, sometimes the county will have the wrong signature signed in. It'll be for Tim Cox and it was Brian Larson that we're looking at or something like that. So. We go through and we resolve those. Uh, we give people a chance to, to, to resolve. Of those thirteen provisionals, three people came in. And those were counted today and included into the total. So the new revised total, the four. There were three provisionals. One was a spoiled ballot because somebody voted both for and against the levy. Um, so that one had to get thrown out. So there's one for and one against. So the final result that you're certifying or reviewing is nine hundred and seventy eight for the general fund levy, nine hundred and forty four against the, the. The levy that is a margin of thirty four. And before you consider this for approval. The rules around recount are governed by M C A thirteen sixteen two oh one. And what that says is that if, if the margin is less than. Uh, one quarter, one percent of the vote of the ballots that were cast, then. In our case, that would equal four point eight something. So you round up to five. It was five or less. Then the public has a chance to contest that and ask for a recount on that. And the recount process looks like ten electors would need to petition the board. Through me, uh, asking for that, for, for a recount to occur. So in this case, with the margin of thirty four for recount is, 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 is not. On the general front level, we'll talk about the.
I'll make a motion then to certify, um, the general fund levy.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of certifying the general fund levy, I. All those opposed? Unanimous.
Very good. Uh, for the tech fund levy, uh, we were one of the tightest, not the tightest, we were next to, next to tightest across the entire. Um, well, now we are the top tied for ties across the entire state. For the tech fund levy, uh, the original results that I posted were nine hundred and fifty nine, four and nine hundred and fifty eight against. That was a margin of one. Um, today, when we counted the three provisional votes, there is one for and two against. Which means the new result is nine hundred and sixty to nine hundred and sixty. That is a tie. And it's been explained to me, the rules around a tie is that, that you, you, you're required to do a, a recount. And the recount is done by the board. So the board will need to call a special board meeting and it works for everyone here. And we're gonna go back through the votes. So the votes right now are sealed in my office. And what we're gonna do is we're gonna reopen them in a public, in, in here, in a public place. It'll be a public meeting that's noticed. And ideally, you have somebody present. That voted for the levy and somebody who voted against the levy so that you, so that whatever's happening is being monitored. Is that an issue? So, um, and, and that's a little tricky. I, I asked, I asked our, our, so the woman Nicole Thurl, who's in charge, who really helps all of us, all the school systems through this. Um, I said, well, how do you determine that? And she says, that's a good question. So, um, uh, so to the best that we can, I will put in the public notice that we would request people come forward. Who have voted both for and against the levy. If you guys know of anyone who voted for and against, then you can ask them to show up. But yeah, that's a tough one. I haven't been given a definitive way of making sure that that happens. That's all I can offer on that. I'm sorry.
So when you, when you noted the difference between the general fund. Uh, pre and the final, was there a two vote difference on that?
There's a one vote difference with the tech fund. It was nine fifty nine.
No, on the general fund, because I thought you said it went from nine seventy six to nine seventy seven.
Nine, oh, it went from nine seventy seven to nine seventy eight. So it increased by one. There were three, three provisionals, one for, one against, and one was spoiled.
Okay.
The spoiled one is.
Spoiled of general.
Right, so when the judges get a, a, um, a ballot and somebody marks both for and against, you don't know what they voted for. So the next step would be to consider. Certifying these results and then coming up with a date when we would have a special board meeting to do the recount. I would then notice that with forty eight hours advanced. Learning with all the language that we just sort of mentioned.
Entertaining motion to certify the tied levy.
I'll make a motion to certify the tied tech fund levy. And that we as a board will, will have to come up and notice that.
We can, in this meeting, if you want, we can come up with a date. One thing at a time. So we got, uh, so certifying, we got a motion.
So if we, this motion certifies it, then we can make another motion to. Have a board meeting or do you want?
Or you can do it all at one time.
So in this discussion, then of this, we can discuss when we'd like to have another board meeting. To, uh, go over those election results.
Um, that, just so you guys know what your starting point is. The other judges put these in bundles of two hundred. And went through these and sort of caught, you know, sort of checked each other two or three times going through these. So a lot of the preliminary grouping has been done. Um, like this is gonna take three people. Two hours, two and a half.
And is there a timeline that we have to have this done by?
That's a good question. The, the five days, the, the, the electors have five days to ask for a recount. Does, does the, does it say?
It says a recount, so no matter if it conducted, the recount must occur within five days of the official canvas.
We've got to have forty eight hour notice at the meeting, right? So it's gotta be after two days and before five days.
Yeah.
Right?
Well, I, yeah, I guess.
That's a tricky word problem.
As soon as I saw we got three provisionals, I said, oh man, adding an odd number to not gives an even, but it ends with.
This might be just for a tie in a trustee election. I don't know if it's different for a levy.
Well, we can, you know, I don't know if this is gonna be any better with time. If you guys, uh, uh, you know, Friday. Seventeenth, I could get it noticed tomorrow. We could knock this thing out on Friday if you guys. I need, we need quorum though, at least three.
Three, we could technically do Thursday or Friday, correct?
Uh, yeah, I could get it noticed tonight. Yeah.
Thursday be better for me, but.
Yeah, I can, I can do Friday, but I can't do Thursday.
We all maybe.
What time are you thinking?
It's really up to you guys. I've, I've. It's the, the bottleneck. Are you, Jeff, Friday afternoon or?
I could do, I could do Friday morning. I could do Thursday. Morning.
We can do it after, we can do it after dinner. These guys got started, the judges got started at. It met here at two, we did some paperwork. It got started at three and they were done by ten o'clock.
I mean, I would rather do it first thing in the morning.
You wanna, you wanna do Friday morning?
Like Thursday or Friday morning at seven?
Friday morning, five to seven works for me.
I might be able to do it. I'd have to arrange kid drop off, but.
You want to make it eight? Was that making it easier?
That's okay, though.
So I'm gonna put board recount meeting.
How high can your kid go?
Or we can't meaning we'll say seven AM. We're doing that?
And on Friday, that.
Friday or Thursday?
Three, if it'll go.
Friday, Friday.
All right, tonight, I'll, once I get, when we get done here, I'll collect everything that's happened and we send out. All right, so now we're gonna motion this, and we're gonna certify with that is the.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to certify the tie for the technology fund levy. And we're going to do a recount on Friday. May seventeenth at seven AM.
In the library here, good.
In the library.
Is there a second? Okay, is there any more discussion on that? We've pretty much discussed it. Okay. Um, all those in favor of meeting, of, of certifying the tied technology fund. Levy election and planning for a recount meeting on Friday, May seventeenth. At seven AM, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay, unanimous. You hear it. On Friday. Okay, now we need to adjourn this meeting because this is the election portion of the meeting, correct, Mark?
Correct. Five thirty two, not too bad. We promised catch on five thirty and I mean, that's, Cal, that's not too bad.
Well, I, yeah, I can do it any time. It doesn't have to be during the meeting.
Okay, all right, well.
I can do it right now.
We can, that's where we are. Let's do this.
Right in there, in, in a slot for you.
Okay.
We're good. Okay, but we need to adjourn this meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor of the adjournment? Opposed? Unanimous. Now we go on to the second sheet where. We would like to welcome. The, um, newly elected board members.
Running away.
Laurel Eckert and Mark Wadi. We're happy to have them be on the board for another year. Our another three years.
These are three year terms, correct?
Starting this year, so.
All right.
All right, so, and Cal, that superintendent has agreed to come and. Where is?
Gotta swear at him for sure. There you go. So, hey, congratulations, first of all, fifty percent or fifty percent for the vote. That's amazing. So you guys did a great job. Amazing. So, all right, well, you guys, where it says oath of office, kind of two thirds of the way down there. I'll, Laurel, you can go first. So you have to read that out loud.
Okay. I do solemnly, I do solemnly swear. That I will support, protect and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Montana. And that I will discharge, discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Sign all three of those copies and then you need to sign all three and then you need to sign all three as well. Go ahead, Mark, you're up.
I do solemnly swear that I will support, protect and defend the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Montana, and I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. So help me God.
Congratulations. Yeah, go ahead and sign all three, sign all three and sign all three.
One, one for me, one for you and one for them?
Yes, correct, yep. You guys are gonna get on bones, it sounds like, huh?
Sound like.
Well. You know, Ty is like kissing your sister. That's okay. You gotta sign all three of them. Yeah. Well, actually, just give me one.
A what? I can just say.
Awesome, thank you, sir.
All right, thanks, guys. Get Marilyn to sign the top. Good with the signature checks, Cal.
Yeah, I know.
All right.
Okay. So that was easy. Now go on to the next section. Call for nominations for chairperson to serve during the ensuing year. So I will call for nominations for a chairperson.
I'd like to nominate Marilyn Headstrom to serve as chairperson for the next. Year.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Thank you, wise leader.
It's been, it's been a pleasure this past year. I, I look forward to working with you guys again. I think we had a good, I think we had a. We've had success and it's been good. So, all right, well, um, is there any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Now, assumption of office by the new chairperson, what do I do? Just say yes?
Yep.
I'll be honored to serve for another year. Now, call for nominations for vice chairperson to serve during ensuing year.
I'd like to nominate Stephanie Hanson for vice chairperson.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? I'd like to say Stephanie has been, I can, I'm here, it's been, it's been great. Been good, so I'm glad to have her for vice chairperson again. All those in favor? Opposed? Opposed? Unanimous, Stephanie will be the vice chair. Um, appointment of clerk. Nobody's standing in line. I think we can, uh. Yes, entertain a motion to appoint Mark as our clerk for next year.
I'll take the motion to appoint Mark Vessler as a clerk for coming year.
I'll second.
Alright, is there any discussion?
Thank you, Mark.
Also, I don't, I don't get a choice to accept doing. Pleasure work, seriously. I really like this board a lot. I think you guys are awesome to work with. Was that Waddy motion and Eton?
I, I think we do, it's, it's, we will go about that, yeah. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay, so, unanimous for Mark to be our clerk for the coming year. Okay, now we get, back then, now we're going to the consent agenda. Approval of agenda, approval of minutes of the prior meeting, district substitute list and other district agreements. Um, I guess we'll need to entertain a motion, motion, motion to accept the consent agenda.
Motion to accept the consent agenda. I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Alright.
Opposed? Unanimous. Financial update and approval of bills. Now, Stephanie asked before that we have the financial update. Given before the approval of bills, and Mark's good enough to be able to.
Alright.
To do that.
I like the suggestion, I still, that's to give a little context, and we'll see how we're doing here. So, for the financial update, I promise this will not. Alright, um, for May, and we were talking about April results. Hopefully, this will work for folks, um, so that year-over-year monthly spending, year-over-year cumulative spending. And I'm gonna show a revised target of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars versus the four hundred we had been talking about. Uh, budget versus actual expenditures, um, coming out of Black Mountain Software. Then cash balances for funds, those are, those, uh, cash balances are literally what we have in each one of our operating funds. Uh, that is held by our bank, which is, um, really glacier bank ultimately, but county is the one that keeps the reports on the course. Next year, my, once we get through our fund balancing challenges, I'd like to show where the funds are in terms of where they're balanced, because really that means that. Black Mountain is the matching, let's say, the county. It's not, there's some discrepancies right now, um, there's, there, there. They haven't changed substance substantially from what we talked about back in March. Uh, anywhere between thousands of dollars to tens of thousands, so. Um, they only need to work in this one. So, we've, this one has been, uh, graph that we've looked at every, every month this year, hopefully, this is. Been informative, um, as Richard says, the object of the game here is the red bar should be less than the blue bars, and then we know that we're saving money. On a monthly basis relative to what we spent last year, um, so, April was another favorable month. Uh, where, I should not like cheat cheat back here, so, um, in April, our total spend out of the general fund. Tracking sheet here. Total spend. There it is, uh, was four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars versus four hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars from prior year. So you can tell it's about thirty-two thousand dollars reduced spending, and so that's about the tip that we need to be on. On a monthly basis, if we can win our revised targets. So good stuff there. Um, and remember, uh, it was April, February fifteenth, when did we cut off spending? So we, we, that's when we said the special spending with the teachers was, uh, was turned off. And really, we have seen a fair amount, and what, what I would call our truly variable spend, uh, has been cut, uh, down. Any questions on this? Pretty good shape so far. Good effort by everybody, and really, a lot of that staff. Now, here's the one that I, that I changed again, and so, this graph, just to remind everybody, uh. The blue is, the blue line is a sum, it's a cumulative sum of all the blue bars that you saw on the product route. And the red is if you take each one of those red bars and stack it on top of each other, this is what you get, so it's called this cumulative spending year over year. The difference is the yellow line down here, so if you take the blue minus the red, you get the yellow. And so we're trying to, we're trying to spend less money running this school this year than we did last year. And originally, we said, hey, it should be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, because our budget this year is five point oh five seven million. That's the tattoo that all the board members have on their, on their arms, and we know that last year we spent five, five point three million dollars. But did we really? And that's the point of these revised targets. So, originally, I said, hey, if we can, we were tracking against two hundred and fifty thousand dollar target. But as Richard and I were talking, I said, you know, Richard, because I'm looking at these numbers, it feels more like four hundred, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I really felt that a number that was higher. Right, well, well, I wonder why that is, because, you know, you look at your TFS, there's the trustees' financial statements here, and it says, we said to the state that we spent. Five point three million dollars in the general fund, and that's true. Out of the general fund, we spent that much. The issue is, is that there are over two hundred thousand dollars that was coded as our, as our funds and grants that were originally in the, in the general fund. And have been taken out of the general fund. So really, really, to run this school last year, we spent about five point five mil dollars throughout the school. That's why this target has crept up enough enough, as I've learned more about really what the, the true expenditures are. Uh, that should have hit the general fund, uh, and that need to hit the general fund going forward. And as we were looking at what would be an appropriate, you know, um, intentional and, and, and intelligent. Target for our, our general fund levy, that's how we communicate those numbers. So you say, okay, so, last month, if you remember, I was, I was talking about a target of four hundred thousand dollars, and that's like, wow, now we're at five hundred and fifty, what's going on there? Five hundred and fifty is the number, if we can save that much, running all the way through June, year over year, I'll guarantee we don't have to do. A budget amendment, so that means that we have enough to cover that big payroll, payroll that we've got, and then some of the, um. The, the variable spending we have, uh, as well, because really, your, 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 your salaries are fixed, they're fixed, it's, you know what they are already. So if we can get that five hundred and fifty zone, guaranteed, we won't have to run a budget. Now, anywhere between four hundred and five hundred thousand dollars, that's gonna depend on how many other. Unforeseen expenditures we have and how much I can code out of, um, other funds, um, that I can use to cover that gap that we're talking about. And things, example, Richard, when he went, we were talking about the idea part B money, that was come, normally, when we, we pay into the co-op, and at the end of the year, the co-op then. Gives us back some of the money. It's the two and fourteen thousand dollars, um, this is just an example. But, um, about six weeks ago, the co-op said, no, we're not gonna give the money back this year. I'm like, what? Are you kidding me? That's when, you guys can't change the rules halfway through the year. That's not how this game is played. And so Richard went to the meeting, and he's part of the, he's part of the, the, the board there, and they made what. The business managers were hoping they'd do, and say, look, this year we'll give it back, but next year, their, their budgets are running tight too, so that they don't think they can. They're gonna be in a position to refund that money, so we need to take that into consideration more. And other things like that, when we're doing the budget for next year, so those fourteen thousand dollars, those types of things, when you add these things up. Uh, can, 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 can come into these numbers. What I'm gonna do to protect the school is, uh, there's about eight steps, six, eight steps. You need to take to do a budget amendment. The budget amendment has to be done by June thirtieth. I'm gonna take the first two, so that are a little bit time consuming, but it sort of warms up the process, so that OPI knows that we might be. Uh, pulling the trigger on one of these things, and so by our June board meeting, that, uh, will, uh. We'll know whether we should have one of those in place. Even if you have one in place, it doesn't mean you have to spend it, it just tells, it gives you the authority, the budget authority to spend the money. And so the state says, okay, we recognize you have fifty-year reserves, and our reserve is about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, so you can see. This positive result that the general fund could not have come at a better time for us, so, I mean, hats off to, to every, everyone who's involved in getting this thing through. Um, yeah, so, I, I thought I'd come in here, and you know, we'd all be high-fiving each other, saying, hey, four hundred and fifty, four hundred and fifteen is about the four hundred that we had. Well, once you've been factoring in all that stuff that was coded to the, uh, GOSA grants, and really recognize that that is general fund money this year. Because we don't have those refunds that we've incurred to, that's where we are. Any questions on, on that? So we'll try and make sure, we, we, we've got enough money to finish the year, it's a question of whether we have to dip, don't do that, why does it do that?
Here we, so effectively, if we, if we do the budget amendments, and then potentially maybe we only utilize a smaller portion of it, then it just, you just run a. General fund surplus for the year, and it goes back into your reserves.
Yeah, yeah, it's basically, it's, you're, you're getting that, the state says, okay, we recognize that you're gonna dip in, if you're gonna go above what your approved budget was. And, um, yes, yeah. So, we'll, we'll see, there's, and that's where I'm trying to get the fund, funds balanced, in particular, that miscellaneous one, that one-one-five. Because that's the one that you can, then you have some discretionary coding that you can use on, on your, on, on your, basically, cushion here. Your general fund. Schools that have, uh, more than enough money in general fund, don't worry about that, they're being, those things, they left that, they roll whatever you're, you're. So, that's why there's so much emphasis going forward, that we had got to get those funds balanced, because I don't. I can't tell you exactly how much we have in each one of those projects right now. That's what Cindy's trying to get, get for us, that's what we're gonna be watching to. As a school, that's what's been the most likely the past three years, and it's been subject to a lot of.
And we only have May and June to come up with this difference, correct? On the budget, it ends June thirtieth?
Correct.
And our average monthly savings been around thirty to thirty-five thousand?
Yeah, this, this one was thirty-two, which was one of the bigger months, yeah, right, so, um. Yeah, so you, that's, you're doing exactly what you should be, you're saying, okay, so now if we're gonna come up with another fifty thousand dollars, something like that. We're in that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars zone, does that mean we've got a hundred, like, you know, do we have fifty? Do we have seventy? Do I have seventy? Do I have a hundred? Again, can other funds that I can code and relieve and guarantee that were out of this? This five fifty might really only be five hundred. And then if we come up with another, like, you're doing the math, I can tell right off the bat, so, right, so that five fifty is a guarantee, I mean, we won't have to do it, but let's say it's a five hundred. It's a little, you know, it's a little more risky, uh, forecast. Um, if we come up with thirty-five for next month, then that didn't add up to four fifty, now you only have fifty that we've gotta come up with coding from other, other areas. Fourteen right off the bat, boom, there's your idea. Things like, we talked about things that could spawn, or both, or two, we have settlements, or some, some guy that's, it's forty thousand dollars, such. What we're doing is, we're also, you know, that's why when we were working with the curriculum directors, we're saying, hey, there's a twenty thousand dollar. Curriculum that we wanna buy, well, let's pay for it next year, because we do not, we, we don't wanna be getting into the reserves this year if we can, so. And it's next year's curriculum, why not pay for it next year? Those are, we're trying, we're trying to manage those things, and those, those are completely. Completely kosher to do that type of stuff. So I can tell Steph is, Steph is, I said, so, we should, we should be in that four fifty zone, and then I'll know more about, you know, how much we have. Any other questions on this one? We're all gonna be happy when we get this answer thing completely behind us, this is, this is a lot, most schools got, got, or any, these issues trying to unwind what happened there. Code, trying to do the right stuff. Now, it doesn't feel that way. Alright, uh, general fund, um, so, this one, uh, I think this is a good one to look at. This is a, this is a snapshot out of Black Mountain, that shows us what we have. These are expenditures, these are not fund balances. Nor, so to get a fund balance, I have to put in the revenues and then net the, um, net the expenditures. Expenditure, the, that is, that number is that five point oh five seven, that's your tattoo, that's on your, on your bicep, right? And so, that number is seventy-two percent of the way there, and that says, we're just a little, we're, we're not too bad. But the big problem is that seventy-two percent doesn't work exactly, because we have that two and a half times payroll that we gotta run. This year, okay, and that's the one that last year, that one is really should be about one to one point one million dollars, last year was seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And it was, you know, you go back over the past four years, and you see a million, million one, a million oh five, seventy, so kind of, that's where all that coding. To the S R grants went, that's why we have that additional bill gap right now. Alright. The other thing, um, is, so these are, this is what your individual bank accounts, you know, your funds are, that, uh, that were. Um, so this is what the county says you have in it. These are the things that Cindy had worked, remember, this was negative at the beginning of this year. Um, it was about a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, that's because there was money that was sitting in the miscellaneous fund, this is your general fund at the top, one-on-one, one-on-one fifteen. You're miscellaneous, and this one is where all your grants go. There's a bunch of stuff that was in grants, specifically, there's S R coding. Things that should have been transferred up, or they should have told the county, hey, we gave you that, oh, okay, you wanted us to slosh that money. We didn't do that, and then we lost a few months of interest off of that, and that's not small money, that's five percent. So if you take, you take what that is, up for hundreds of thousands of dollars, uh, that's, you don't wanna be in that position. So I think I'll continue to give the board this one next year to keep us, and hopefully, finance will take us, you know, to, take a seat that's, uh. A little more under control, and, and we can start talking about everything that we should be during a school versus just the finance. The, the other thing I'll do is I'll add in the, um. Fund balances, and so the fund balances should be, uh, you know, should be, they should equal each other. So just, um, the forecasting updates or the summary slide here, um, continued, yeah, concern of about a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars. I'll put this hundred to two hundred thousand dollars less than forecasted, uh, spend, um, and remember these, uh. That, that's the amount of stuff, uh, that Stefan and I were just sort of talking about a little bit, um, and I've raised the target from two to fifty. We thought it was as simple as five point three minus five point oh five to the four hundred, and we say, oh, actually, we've got more in that. Um, that, when Richard and I were talking about, saying, hey, there's more going on here, and then when you really look at what it's gonna take. We understand what was happening and make sure we don't have to get them the reserves, that's where that five fifty is right there. Any questions on that? We'll know really where we are in, sure, in the generated. And I do, do wanna just raise this, um, since October, I've been involved in contesting, uh, two IRS fines. Uh, for us that relate to the W two filings back in two thousand twenty-one, these are two times forty thousand, five hundred dollars for a total of eighty, eighty-one thousand dollars. Um, on a monthly basis, I drive over to the IRS, uh, uh, office and say, hey, how are we doing on resolving this? Um, what this is, is the, the IRS claims that, that they did not receive the appropriate documentation. That proved we had sent out all of our W twos to our employees back in two thousand twenty-one. And so this was when we converted over to Black Mountain, and, um, so there are things. Uh, small schools do paper, they send papers, they say, hey, yes, here's a copy for everybody's W twos, larger schools like us. We do electronic uploads to the IRS, uh, website, um, and they claim they didn't get it. And so the illness is on us to prove they did get it, and I think we found, uh, evidence that we have it, and I'm just asking, is that, is that gonna be need? And every month, they say, we don't know yet, we don't know yet, we don't know yet, and so, um, see, this is another one, if we have to come up with eighty thousand dollars. It would throw us into a budget cycle, so those are the types of things, um, that I just want the board to be aware. Um, I believe we have everything we need, they need to tell us that, um, and so I just want to put that on everybody's radar screen, so there's another eighty thousand dollars that. You, you know, that's what recognizes.
Let me get this straight, W twos were sent out to our employees, okay, no problem about paper or whatever.
Yeah.
And, but, but the, what we, we, I would. Of, of filing every year that you have to tell exactly how much money you sent to each person. And, and that has to go in to the government.
Yeah.
And that's the one you're missing. But they claim.
They claim that they didn't get documentation that everybody here got their W two, because remember, by, by January thirty-first. You have to do that for employees.
That's right, but they should have had a, they should have had a.
They're supposed to know too. Yes, and they're supposed to, they're supposed to have something on their record that says, okay, you guys had eighty-seven employees in here, eighty-seven W twos.
Right.
Okay, we got it. They don't, they, they claim they didn't have that. Now, the IRS has been changing their upload system, and we changed our accounting system, so there are a couple things going on.
It took them three years to figure out that they didn't have it.
Well, it's taken nine months to, I think they already have the answer that they're gonna make. So, I don't, I don't do, weren't we, was Biden putting a lot of money into, and then, I don't, I think there's a lot of funding that was supposed to go to the IRS for staff. Okay, so this one, I'm going, just want you guys to know, so I'm gonna be aware that there's a eighty thousand, now, but the thing that really gets me tweaked off is when I get the. Uh, they, they are good about accruing interest on things that they have.
So, we get our legal counsel on that, if they do come back and say, it seemed like it'd be worth it to spend a little bit of money to try to fight that. Instead of just paying the million thousand dollars.
In jet, yes, I would say the short answer is yes, if we have to do that, in general, we shouldn't be able to contest this thing, so, alright. Uh, we already had, uh, there was once where Black Mountain had the wrong date on, what's called ninety or nine forty-one, your quarterly taxes, and you did. They had the wrong date, they had a queue two, and it should have been two, three, and you upload it, and the IRS said, you didn't upload your order lease to us, boom, here's thirteen thousand dollars. By the way, that's your wrong in the next course, there's twenty. And the IRS said, you didn't upload your order lease to us. Boom, here's thirteen thousand dollars. And by the way, that's your wrong in the next course. There's twenty-six that are sitting out there. We already addressed that this year. Um, those are the things that's kind of frustrating, because, you know, we're doing the best we can to run a school, and we're not CPAs, and and so. And then you, but they're they're not too bad when you when you come and you say, hey, we did this thing. Oh, so they waived that one already. But we, this one may have not. They go out with a problem, so. But you're right, yeah, ultimately, we could grab an attorney. We have, right?
And can they prove that we didn't? I it's, I mean, it feels flopped. It feels like guilty until proven innocent. But I'm like, how do you prove that we're guilty?
Yeah, kind of feels that way. Uh, that's kind of the, yeah, yeah. And so you have to prove you prove. It's kind of just like with you. Did you prove, did you send in taxes last time? And you have, you have to say, yep, I did, or you guys owe me. Yeah, the M S is I. Alrighty. Uh, next one. Good. The other thing, just as you guys are looking at the, uh, claims approval list. Um, the thing that you can look at, and it's on the last page of that claims approval list, that link, you'll see that, and this is what I keep my eye on, right? So we know that. Our payroll is about three hundred and eighty-five to three, three hundred and ninety thousand dollars a month, uh, to run that. What we're looking at here, what you guys are looking at is. Look at that top line for the the one oh one, the general fund. The these are, these are paper checks and electronic claims that we're paying here. So you'll see the number thirty thousand five fifty-four. If you go to the next to last page, last page just says Merrill's signature on it. Next to last page, because everyone see the thirty thousand five five four. If you see that, that's the number I keep my eye on to know that we're, our spending is actually going down. And so. If you scroll back through the other pages, you'll see the the big items on that, that thirty-five five four. I was real excited at the beginning of the month. Or just before we got a bill from our auditors, there's eight thousand dollars in there. It's about two-thirds of what are out of the list. So that number, I was excited when I saw it was twenty-two, and then we get paid for eight thousand. Other things that that drive that thirty thousand dollars. I is electricity. It's there's forty-four ninety-four. So we we spend about forty-five hundred dollars a month on electricity. Another janitorial supplies, there's seventeen hundred dollars in there. So you, when you go back through that, you'll see these different things. There's, um. There's sixteen hundred and thirty-five in election expenses. So our election cost us about six, seven thousand dollars to run in total, just mostly printing, printing and mailing costs. And then, um, there's another big one that you've seen there, the very first one, every month, the Blue Cross Blue Shield, that's the retiree healthcare premiums. Um, the the other healthcare premiums for employees all go through payroll. There's a payroll deduction, but this one we pay for. We pay for a portion of that. So, you know, maybe get two wound up over to forty-four twenty-four. Some of that, like Cindy Foley pays for her own. But then there are, uh, other ones like Mary Kay Dover who we pay for for three years, um, for their eligible medical contract. Just to give you guys context, uh, that thirty thousand five fifty-four was forty-four, one forty-six, so about fourteen thousand. Higher in April is forty-eight in March, and it was forty-seven in February. So if you look across that, that is a big dip, and. No one wishes we wouldn't have had to pay grand for an audit more than me, trusting on that one. So. So in general, I that that hopefully that gives you a flavor of what's going on with bills. Well, and next year, we'll, you know, I'll be more familiar with this, and we'll be better situation, so.
I'll make the motion to approve the bills.
Bye, Ben. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the bills? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Unanimous. Okay, correspondence. I think we.
None.
None, none, no guests or public participation. Well, they're our guests, but nobody is gonna speak. Okay, thank you. Um, the PTO report, Julie and Katie.
Um, all right, so we are always the bitters of awesome answers. Um, so we just finished up Teacher Appreciation Week. Um, I think it was overall, the staff was happy. There are a few things that got slipped by our radar in a chaotic week, like. No lettuce and tomato for the taco bar. So my deepest apologies and no, not meaning in a, but like, we do mess up. We are human as well. So, you know, it's recognized now. Sorry that it didn't happen the day of. Um, otherwise, I think it was a great time. I, like, the kids had a great time with it. The staff had a great time with it, doing. The different dress up days and fun. Like, we definitely rocked the nineties last week. So it was a great time. Um. Otherwise, we're just trying to wrap up the year, get our calendar kind of figured out for next year. Um, it's gonna be the Julie and Julie team next year, and we've got a bunch of board members that are. Flying away from the Knicks. So if you know anyone that wants to come hang out with Julie and Julie, I mean, what better time is that? Um, we're just kind of dotting some i's and crossing our t's with that stuff. Um, field day is a big thing coming up. We're helping with career day in two weeks.
And then a field trip tomorrow for STEM, for some great girls.
Yep, and, um, yeah, we're just trying to get out of the school year, not not because we aren't loving it, but we're kind of like getting to that point of like, everyone kind of done and over. With the year, I think. So, you know? Congratulations on the levy. I was really excited that we were gonna be the only ones with double, but maybe fingers crossed something weird happens, right? And it's not really a tie. In the positive way, not in.
The best possible way.
Um, other than that, yeah, I don't know what else we got. So.
Well, once, yeah, thank you for everything you do. We appreciate you.
Let us know if you need more help with other things, right? Oh, we canceled our meeting for Wednesday. We just got too much going on. So we were able to cancel our meeting. You guys are adding a meeting. It's very. There you have it. Thank you.
The West Valley Teachers Association. I mean, nothing, nothing today. Okay, everything's.
Everything's good.
Sounds good.
And thank you to the PTO and the Teachers Association for everything you guys did to help with the the levy election, because it it made a difference.
That was.
Appreciate it.
Success, that's for sure. Thank you. Okay, um, principal reports. This is Blair.
All right. Yeah, we're just gonna chat together. Some of the things overlap a little. Um, so we have exciting. Finally, we've been talking about this from the beginning of the school year, but the Logan Health Mobile Clinic finally came out last week and kind of debuted, and the students got to go out and tour and talk to the nurses that were out there. And they are officially up and running as of tomorrow. So they will be here every Tuesday and Thursday from nine to four. And so they're gonna be able to see students and their families. Um, and if they're, um, discussing with us whether we want to open it up, um, broader to the community, but we think we're gonna just start off with students and families. Um, to start off with this year and see how that goes. But, um, I'll show you some pictures. It's a pretty large vehicle, a lot bigger than I thought. Um, so we have them just parked way over here, and that's where they're gonna continue to be. And then the inside's pretty nice as well. It's just like a little doctor's office, and. Um, yeah, we're really, really excited about that. And just to remind you guys that they won't be seeing any students without parent permission or parents being present and all of that. So. Um, they've got a really smooth system in place, and they're at a lot of different schools and have done this before. So, um, yeah, it'll be really, really awesome. Um, I also wanted to talk about our assembly. We had our very last, um, Warrior Way Assembly for the elementary. And we were focusing on courage. So students got awards. They were nominated by their classmates, um, for having the courage to do the right thing. And they got, uh, certificate and a keychain that we made for them, and their parents were also invited. So we had families there to to celebrate them as well. We had a mascot, um, Joey Verone, an eighth grader volunteered to do that, and it was pretty awesome. He had some good dance moves. Enjoyed. So it was, it was a huge success. And then we also had the Spring Special Olympics back in April, and so. And our kiddos win some medals, and it was really, really exciting. So we also celebrated them at that assembly. And then Family Math Night was at the end of April as well. So we had three hundred and twenty-two people, um, register to come. And our attendance wasn't quite as great as we had hoped, and we think it might have been our timing with sports. So we had a lot of people had good intentions of coming, and then sports got in the way. So we're gonna kind of rearrange it next year. And, um, we have a day dedicated to Math Day or Curriculum Day, or we have some flexibility of what we can make that, but it'll be during the day so that hopefully, um. Families can come in and make it a big event for our school.
Yeah, this last week, we took the eighth graders, uh, to Fort Missoula on their history trip, and they had earned money by selling wreaths. And, um, I had never been to the the fort before, but the students had a great time. They went through four different rounds of displays and learned about. Uh, Montana's involvement with World War, World War Two and, um, the internment camp that camp there. This year, there's some of the students that are in an old schoolhouse that was moved to this location, and they got to, um. Try out some things from a long time ago and sit in little desks and learn what it would like to learn in in that way and play the piano there. And. And that was just a wonderful trip and a day out for them. It was coordinated by Mr. Vissau and the eighth grade teachers.
Um, we also have Career Week in the elementary coming up next week. So Anna Porter, our counselor in elementary, has been working really hard to put all of this together. We're going to start off the week with another big assembly with the range riders. So we've got some people coming in and kind of get the kids pumped up. So it's gonna be awesome. And then we have parents and community members coming into class tonight to talk about different careers, and she's got a whole schedule for that. Um, she put together, um. You know, different resources and things that teachers can do within the classroom. So it's gonna be a really exciting week. Kids are dressing up, all of those things. And then on that Friday. Um, we'll end with Careers on Wheels. And last year, I think we had about eight vehicles, and this year we're already at like eighteen vehicles. So it's gonna be pretty crowded out there. It's gonna be really great. So come check it out next Friday, um, if you're interested. It'll be really fun. Card full. Yeah.
Yeah. Parking's gonna be interesting.
Uh, we had, uh, an Italian family, um, tour that we did this past Friday. Alicia and I welcomed about twenty parents came. And we had a little open talk with them out here on the front steps and shared information, just general things about the school, and then opened it up for questions and took them on a tour through the school. Most of them were kindergarten, incoming kindergarten parents. Questions they had about the school were related to, um, like whether or not we have a school nurse here. Um, an SRO, do we have access to a school resource officer? Um, also asking about security and child pickup, were some of the. Major questions they were asking for. And somebody wanted to join the PTO.
I know. Uh, speaking of PTO, sorry, I've got one more thing. Yeah, Math Night, they paid for all the food, so I wanted to give them a shout out too, because PTO paid for all of the pizza and subs and everything. So really appreciate that. All right, I'll have some money. Yeah, we'll just go there. We also just finished up our MAST testing, um, for ELA and math. So that closed on Friday. We should get the results for those within about ten days. Not sure if that's business days or, uh, days in general, but. We should be getting those results soon, and then we're going to print out the score sheets and send them home with report cards, because they don't have the parent portal set up yet for this year. So those will be going home, uh, with parents at the end, or with students at the end of the year. And overall, it seemed like kids really enjoy the MAST more than Sback. Uh, we had kids actually like excited for it, and they could do more. I don't know how long that will last, but, uh, we definitely didn't see that with Sback. So that was a positive with that.
Yeah. Um, there are still some makeups for science in the middle school. We're still in the window for the Montana Science Assessments. We still have a few more students to finish that up. And then the, um, third through eighth are about to take the star, the benchmark test that's required, and they'll be taking that this month. So. That's another online test. It takes about twenty minutes for math and twenty minutes for reading.
Our younger kids will be doing names web here pretty soon too. So all of our testing crunch time.
There in the end. And our next assembly is the final Warrior Way Assembly, the trimester three assembly for middle school. And we will be, um, including the eighth grade recognitions at that time, and that's on June fifth. And that's coordinated by, um, Mrs. Harmon and room reps. Um, athletics, we're wrapping it up. So the final cross-country meet for fourth through eighth grade was today. So, um, that was a large event here. And then spring football is running this week with Coach Keller after school for sixth through seventh graders. And field trips coming up for middle school. And Power Your Future is actually tomorrow, and it's a STEM, um, career inspiration for girls in seventh grade. And, um, PTO helped fund that for them with for the buses. Um, and then on the last day of school. The fifth, sixth, and seventh graders will be going to Lawrence Park. It's what we usually do. It's a move-up day, and they can meet their new teachers. And the room reps are helping to fund the buses for that, on the money that was made through their activities throughout the year. And activities coming up. There's a lot going on. You've got.
Yeah, we have first grade music concerts all of this week. So that's exciting things. And there's a lot of other things kind of coming up in the. Coming weeks, like Bike Bike Week and some fishing stuff. And so there's quite a few events in different grade levels that'll be happening.
And we've got the Beginning Band Festival for the Valley is held here this week, and there are concerts at five thirty PM on the sixteenth. And then on the twenty-third, we have our actual choir concert here for sixth through eighth grade. On the twenty-third, um, eighth graders will be competing in rocketry over at Glacier High School throughout the day. With Mrs. Rush and Allison Gottfried. Um, and then. We have the seniors will come back and do a walkthrough. So this is kind of neat. They will be here at ten thirty in the morning on the thirtieth. And these poor kiddos did not get to finish their eighth grade here. There are, there are kids that got sent home for COVID. So they're actually coming back to do their walkthrough. And so we're getting their ceiling tile ready and stuff. They never got to sign their ceiling tile and those types of things. So we're glad to welcome them back. On the thirtieth that morning, the whole school participate in that. And the actual promotion is on June sixth. So. The promotion ceremony for eighth graders is on June sixth at six PM. And I'd like to invite all of you to attend. But I also would like to have one or two of you to hand out the promotion certificates. We call out the names, but traditionally, a board member will hand them out to the bits. So if any of you have grandchildren, grandchildren. I know that Maryland has one. And if any of you have a niece or nephew or something, you can invite them. You can shriek out to me and let me know, or you just wanna help with it. But, um, you're all invited, um, that night.
And then, um, on that last day of school tour, that last week, we've got Play Day for K five. So we're gonna set up some obstacles and different things out there and have parents volunteer and make it kind of a fun end of the year for our kiddos.
Yeah, so in the midst of all this testing, there's a lot of fun going.
Yes. Possible to get a list of all of those dates. I know they're not gonna stay up here.
Um, we, we have it printed out, so we can send this to Mark too. You guys will like look through our notes.
We'll share it. We'll share that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, first of all, I wanna say huge thank you to everyone who helped out with the levy efforts. Just an absolutely incredible result, incredible turnout. Um, and I couldn't be honestly more humbled and excited to continue working with. This board and, uh, staff and community that we have here. I think it was a huge show of support for what we're doing. And I think it's now up to us to to prove it, right? So work starts now, and, um, I think that we're in a great spot to be able to to fire up and do it. With whatever turns out with the tech levy, that will be either yes or no. And however that runs out, we've just gotta know that, uh, a lot of people supported us. And we still have a lot of people to turn around, both the general fund, you know, and the and the tech fund. So we'll continue to work on that. Due to the length of the meeting, I'll keep it pretty short. Um, just Phil and I are working on the summer list. Which is, uh, usually you sit down and kind of look at some of the maintenance projects that'll be done. There have to be done when there's no kids around, looking at what we can afford, um, as well. Which is, was just something that we're, um, always kind of making sure that we use the right funds and the right timing to pay for those. Just a small list is that we're new drinking fountains in the large gym. Um, those will be going up. We are gonna have to wax. The classroom floors in the elementary that needed the tile in the hallway. They haven't been done in two years. So, um. Any more wear and tear on that, it's gonna start looking like the room. So any more wear and tear on that, it's gonna start looking like the rooms that are on the very top, which we don't want to have happen. So we're gonna also mitigate the tiles coming up on the top there. So stay tuned on that. That's becoming a little bit harder than we thought. We're gonna have to do something about the parking lot and the asphalt resurfacing and painting, which hasn't been done as well. The east parking lot where teachers park on the other side is getting to the point where I'm not even sure that resurfacing it. It's gonna be enough to prevent it from cracking and breaking because some water got in there and over the last couple of winters and. It's done some damage to it. And of course, then the lines over there are almost invisible anyway. The playground is also another spot that will likely not, it's not nearly as bad as the parking lot and the other one. But we'll need to look at that to be repainted and resurfaced within the next couple of years minimum. We're gonna have to also do the gym floors. They should be done every year and they have also not been done. They need to be lightly sanded and filled in with their magic machines. So I spoke with. Bruco, who normally does our stuff and he's gonna give me some quotes. The office has the contracts. So we just have to get that done. But if we keep putting that off, then it could. Actually be a cost that would be prohibitive for us to pay for if it gets bad enough. So a lot of this stuff is just general maintenance that because of, you know, our situation. Has been deferred. And if we let it stack up more and more and more, it'll just keep growing and growing and growing. So we've got to figure out some way to maintain a steady, stable budget. While at the same time doing enough to keep the building under general maintenance. We will also, the one non-negotiable that's gonna cost a couple of thousand dollars at least is to replace the big gym doors on the side. We're in a situation where they, they're rusting and unable to fully lock unless you. Really, really pound on it. During last Tuesday's levy stuff, I was walking around trying to get rid of some nervous energy. And ran into the gym door being open. And when I tried to shut it, it just literally popped my pack open. So I talked to Phil about it and he knows the situation on the other side the same way. So we have to get that done. So we'll get that done. The, another would be nice to have is a door for the garage out here. Just to kind of get that more secured and a little less weather in there. But other than that, that's kind of where our windows looking, it's also kind of tough because, you know, you only have. So much time in the summer to get things done and inevitably something comes up and it makes it more complicated. But we think we can get that list done with Tony and Phil working on a lot of that stuff. And then the three custodians that we have back full-time, which will be very, very nice to have. So that they can help with things that need to be done and help move people if people need to move, things like that.
There's money in the building fund for this stuff and it's separate from the general fund. So you somewhere there's a tally of what this is gonna cost versus how much is in that fund, right?
Right. Yep. And that's gonna be a permissive levy that we need to run. It's a building reserve fund.
Do we, could we see that at some point? I mean, it'd be interesting for us to see. How much all this is gonna cost versus how much we have in that.
Yeah, I can tell you it's gonna cost about for some of those things. We're still looking at pricing on the asphalt. But it's about ten to fifteen thousand dollars and we have had it in the building reserve fund.
What about those doors?
The doors, I don't even factor into that because the last quote we got was eight thousand dollars. Minimum, that was just the door. That wasn't an installation or anything like that. So that would probably be a lot more than that. And then the drinking fountains were donated and PTO actually bought those. And so then the, it's just then putting them in. It's very complicated to put those in because the piping goes through concrete walls. And what these are different than what's in there. So there's gonna have to be some pretty. Intensive rerouting of piping and it's not easy when it's through cinder blocks. Which is what Phil ran into in the lunchroom when the drinking fountain and the sinks were put in there. But luckily, it was piped for that to eventually do that. So hopefully, this model will allow for that too. But we, we don't know until we get in there, the problems that are gonna happen.
So you and Phil have a list of priorities of what you're gonna attack first. I mean, it just seems to me that there's a lot of big stuff here and high expensive stuff.
Yeah, and it's stuff like the gym floors we don't do. That's a company. Asphalt's a company, you know. And so Phil, in order for that to happen too, Phil has to then completely sweep the parking lot, which takes some time. So there's a lot to do, but if we don't do it, it's kind of like, you know, a house that starts to run down. Eventually, you just have to either do it or just realize it's gonna continue to fall apart, which we don't want to have happen, so.
No, I'm just hoping there's money somewhere. These are my big ticket items to me.
We talked about it before, what does it take to apply for like a roundup for safety? And with flat electric, because like some of those doors and stuff seem like they get forward to that.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Now, Mark has worked on that because I contacted those people and he's got the numbers. And I guess I've hesitated to encourage him to do that because he has so much.
Well, yeah, it's not really me. What I did is I gave them three different ways to prove that we're a tax exempt organization. At that point, it's whoever's running these projects. Your business manager doesn't do this. That's a whoever's project it is. They apply for the funds, the grant. I do, I do the tracking on the grants.
I don't know. And I guess I'm offering again to take that on. I did that at one point and then kind of. Get a wall so I quit if I wanted it. But you read in the paper every time they say. Their report. And a lot of schools are getting money for that. So I agree. I think those doors would be really good. That'd be a super one because, you know, you think this store, well, we're doing without it, but those doors. I think that's good. We'll have to, we'll see this that again. I think I'll volunteer to see if I can't do that again because Mark's got the paperwork. And we have to get quotes. I think you gotta get three quotes from Phil once he gets that gathering. So we'll have to get it. Cause I think there is. Well, obviously, I was supposed to get it. We are going to try for it.
That's all I have.
Thank you. I want to be action items, action to accept resignation of C Wallace.
Yeah, hate to see Christian decide to do something other than education, but it's gonna help his family business out.
Do we, we need to go through each of these individually and accept the resignations individually?
Yeah, that may be a good idea. I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Christian Wallace.
Any discussion? All those in favor of accepting Chris Wallace's resignation? Aye. I opposed unanimous. Second one, Holman.
Yeah, so this is Katie Holman. She's a middle school special education teacher who accepted a position at Peterson Elementary for a special education position.
Make a motion to accept the resignation of Katie Holman.
Any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the resignation of Katie Holman? Aye. Opposed unanimous.
Yep, so Shawna Folder is next. She's a para in our life skills, special education area, and she wants to homeschool her kids and. Move on to another chapter.
I'll make a motion to accept her resignation of Shawna Folder.
Any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the resignation of Shawna Folder? Aye. Unanimous.
Next one is Julia White. She's currently a para that works for us and she accepted a position to work for the. Yellowstone Boys and Girls Ranch CSCT, which pending your approval and the action item is on H. She is gonna work with Rhonda Vick. She'll still be here at West Valley School, but technically not our employee. She'll be working with. Rhonda as far as the in-school, school-based mental health.
Motion to accept the resignation of Julia White?
Any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the resignation of Julia White? Aye. Unanimous.
Yeah, yep. Then this one's Yulia Alina. She's a wonderful para too in the elementary, tons of experience. Her husband has a lot of health issues, so they're moving to the east coast to be in a much warmer climate for him. I think it's North Carolina. Is where they're moving.
Motion to accept resignation of Julia Alina?
Any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the resignation of Julia? Aye.
And next one is Nikki Suho. She's a para in the middle school and she also accepted a different position or same. Position of a para at a different school.
Motion to accept the resignation of Nikki Suho? Any discussion?
On that, are we, I guess, can we look at at some point like pay of like where we're losing them to a school district five on some of that parent stuff?
Versus effective immediately. So or as of last Friday, are we losing others effective immediately or is it at the end of the school year?
It's the end of the school year as far as Julia White is, I guess you could call that immediately. She's working for them already. She just did training.
Julia is a little bit earlier too. She's made her first.
Just a week in. We need to make a motion to accept the resignation of Nikki.
Yeah, we got a motion, a second. We're in discussion.
All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Be unanimous. Terry Dernfield, is she here? No. The next action item has to do with the approval, discovery, education, science curriculum contract we paid during the July billing cycle. Richard, give anything?
Yeah, so this was something that the science teachers needed to finish up this year and to use it for next year. So they agreed for us to put all of the costs associated with that on next year's budget. So it will not affect anything in the general fund this year, even though the teachers are going to be using it and finishing the year.
Oh, okay. So the company agreed to hold off.
To delay all of the payments.
Till next year.
Till July first.
And science teachers are still really liking that curriculum? Are we tracking like just curriculum in general and use with fidelity and all that stuff like, you know? How successful it is, how much it's actually being utilized?
And that'll be a topic for next year. That's gonna be hit up pretty hard.
I'll make a motion to approve the discovery and science curriculum.
Second.
Do you have any more discussion on that? All those in favor of approving the discovery of education science curriculum? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Action to prove. School year twenty-five, West Valley Yellowstone Boys and Girls Ranch.
Yeah, this is the school-based mental health that I was referring to where Julia White's going. They do a great service for a lot of our kiddos and they really help, help a lot of our students out. I highly, highly recommend that we renew our contract with them.
We used to, we used to give them a place. They don't, we don't, they don't charge us for their.
No, it's all through, and then we get reimbursed through Medicaid and their billing and stuff like that. So it's. Yeah, we have to give them a place to go and that's what we do here with our stuff.
I'll make a motion to approve the school year twenty-five, West Valley Yellowstone Boys and Girls Ranch contract.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, action to prove the school year twenty-five business manager clerk contract for Mark Bessler. Mark is assured, I mean, we've had lawyers look over his contract.
Yeah, this is the same one that was written. It's an extension one that was written for this year. Be looked at over. It's one point seven percent increase. So I think the total is seventy-one. It's changed. What I did is I added in five personal days since money was tight. Work's gonna get done. Soon I'm gonna be going to Antarctica and places, so. It helps with the bookkeeping and record-keeping for us.
Since we can't pay him, there's like, I guess, a few days off is sort of the.
Do we have to pay you when like I drive by and see you here like?
Saturday at ten o'clock.
You know, if you'd be better, if you're better at your job, you wouldn't have to be here. That always improves morale.
I'll make a motion to approve the school year twenty-five business manager contract for Mark Bessler.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Yeah, so this was a maintenance contract for Tony Smith for over the summer. In the past, it's just been a verbal agreement. And a handshake, but we felt like to tighten the ship up a little bit, it might be nice to get him on an official contract. So that's what this is.
And this will go through the whole year. Yes, it's fully, it used to be a summer contract, now it's for the whole year.
So when does that begin, Mark?
July first under the school, so his, yeah, what we used to do is write him a three-month contract, but now he kind of, he does work. Maintenance work throughout the year. The agreement is he doesn't do overtime. That's where it can get tricky, right? So he has two pay rates. One is a para and one is a maintenance person and then he works with Phil to make sure that he doesn't.
And he has a couple hours on the weekends. He comes in.
So it's the same pay progression that he's been on. It's just an extension, so it covers the full year.
Rather than just three months.
Yeah, it used to be that during the year is like, can you do some stuff for him? Now he's on a contract.
During the school year, does he work full-time as a custodian or?
He works as a para in a middle school and then he'll do maintenance jobs as needed. But then they manage it, so it stays under forty hours.
Right, okay. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the maintenance contract for Anthony Smith.
Any more discussion on that?
Was that Hanson or Akram? Second one.
Oh, Akram is me. I didn't hope for saying me.
Okay, we'll keep with any more discussion on that. Are we okay calling for a vote on that? All those in favor of approving the maintenance contract for. Anthony Smith? Aye. Be unanimous. Go ahead, Richard.
Yeah, so this was a athletic director contact for Terry Dernfield next year.
I did not attach the contract, my bad. It's the same one. The wording doesn't change. Terry actually makes the same amount next year she does this year. She's in that band. I just ran out of time, sorry. These are extracurricular stipend contracts that we, they're part of a, that's consistent with what's in the bands. It goes up to years of experience. And it's all budgeted for, well, this, uh, it will be budgeted for, for next year. Yeah, will be.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five athletic director contract for Terry Dernfield.
It's fifty-two seventy is what it is, just the other time.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor of, of approving the athletic director contract for Terry? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post.
Sorry, I didn't want to say the discussion. I would love to see that some of these get opened up internally and externally for, if we can, for some of these positions for that athletic form for next year.
I understood that it had been, at least discussed, there weren't a whole lot of people
That's what it sounds like.
Standing in line for that position. So, um, she agreed to do it, but there aren't a whole lot of people. But once again, if people know that we're open for that. Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. A unanimous. The next one. Richard.
Yeah, the next, I think, wave of tasks for us is to look at our job descriptions and update them. A lot of them just need a little bit of tweaking here and there. Um, some of them haven't been looked at in a long time. Some didn't exist. Um, and this one, put together with the help of a couple of different sources, MTSBA and a couple of other districts that have um, something kind of similar, but not really. It's kind of hard because there's not really this position as a full-time, you know, um, because we're not big enough to need a full-time person. So how you make it a doable thing, but also enough to make it worth it? So I think this is what we landed on. So if you approve it, then it'll go into our bank of job descriptions.
Motion to approve the proposed job description for curriculum director. I'll second it.
Is there any discussion on that? Yeah, all those in favor of approving the curriculum, your, your actual job description? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. A unanimous. Now we go into the next one by the content.
Yeah. So I would highly recommend, Tanya, do it for the curriculum director stipend position for next year.
This is her first year, right?
Yes.
This first year says seventeen fifty-two on a part-time basis. Five percent of days.
I'll make a motion to approve Tanya Judd for the twenty-four, twenty-five curriculum director.
A second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving Tanya Judd for the curriculum director? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Unanimous. Hey, Richard.
Yeah. So the, um, following are for mentor contracts, one for the elementary, one for the middle school. We had Chelsea Blanger for the elementary or K four, and then Gina Wilson for the five-eight. And they'll not only be new teacher mentors, but also a, a part of building a formal mentor program, which we don't have. And we have, in the past, have been asked that at interviews. What is your mentor program look like? Do you have a mentor program? And so we do, and we've done a, you know, great job, I think, in, in the middle school and the elementary. We've really, you know, made some progress on it and, but it needs to be something where it's more formal. Um, and, and tracked, and I think that we have an opportunity now to have a couple of them involved in that process.
They're both at year one, is that right? This is another one. I ran out of time. Sorry, guys. The, um, new teacher, they're both at one. Yeah, that's eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars first each one of them.
Was there two last, two in this school year? Well, you kind of, there's, yeah, it's been something that hasn't been clear. Bethany Knudsen has done it in the past for K four. And she did a wonderful job at being someone teachers could come talk to. You know, Claudia did, did it in the middle school, did a great job. Um, so hopefully this can be something that we can not just use these people, but also use newer teachers. Hey, what would help you? You know, what does it look like in other places? I was a part of one as a new teacher in my former district and just kind of taking bits that worked and putting it together. But yes, there, there was, but it's never been formalized.
For a while Cal had promised Claudia was doing it, not being paid. And then so in the contract last year, we put this in as one of, right? So it's
It's a good point, too.
That's, yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's the lowest of the pay. It's two, two and a half percent base that it's for, and for the first year in the world.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five new teacher mentor contracts for Chelsea and Judd. I'll say who.
Is there any discussion, any further discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Unanimous.
Here's another stipend contract for the middle school band and choir advisor for Sherri Hand. This is an existing stipend. So this is kind of new that going through and approving all these contracts for the, the stipend position. Okay.
Yeah, what we're doing, remember, is kind of a, a contention last year, but they weren't being posted on a regular basis. So then we, Richard's done a real nice job. Get them out there. Get people to sign up. They go through a process. And then, and then we've got everything here. The stipends are now visible to everybody.
So this kind of facilitates what Stephanie was getting at with making sure there's a process to totally open the
And, and job descriptions too, yeah, because that was kind of
We're trying to bring clarity, remember, last year with all this.
Yeah.
Now, this, this just, this is just for her band and choir advisor. This is apart from her job as a music teacher, right?
Correct.
This is the, a stipend that will be connected just with the choir and bands and the concerts.
School hours.
Make a motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five middle school band choir advisor contract for Hans.
Second. Is any further discussion? Right, all those in favor of approving the middle school band choir advisor for hand? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. A unanimous. Now, Mark, this is absolutely with you.
Our next one. Yep, so, uh, all the business managers in the state are driving out the billings on Sunday the night. So you said, really? You're driving the billing? So, um, yeah, so our, our meeting was scheduled for the tenth. A lot of schools are caught in this. Go on, let's move on to the meeting. This is just a request to put it on record that we're going to make the meeting to the, the first Monday rather than the second. It'll be June third if everyone's okay with that. Your gym meeting. And the next one after that, most likely will be in July.
I'll make a motion to approve rescheduling the June regular board meeting from Monday, June tenth to Monday, June third.
Second. Yeah, I'd just like to say, we just need to be really, really, really sure that we get publication out on that so that everybody knows that it's at the third, at the, at the, don't want people coming back at us and saying we did something. You know, they're leaving. So just so long as we be sure and get that out.
You're very good at watching the daily interlink. I, I
They got it right. I was going to say, they, it was correct.
Did they get it right?
I brought it to you. You can frame it. Every now and then, there's
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, good. I'm good. Thank you. Thank you for having us. I'm going to take the high road here. I think that's awesome.
So anyway, we need to get that date changed or whatever, so they're sure and have
I'll hit them, I'll hit them on one side of you, check them. Awesome.
Did anyone else read that announcement in the interlink other than you?
I'm going to put that down in commentary, Mark, because I
I'm a little worried about the website being updated.
It's, it's, it's actually our newsletter, is really, because I, I think a lot of people, that's where it's like
Well, I don't think we, I don't think our board meeting dates got, ended up getting posted to the school webpage. I don't think, or did they?
We had a great
I think they're in the calendar.
The calendar.
Okay.
That's what I'm a little worried about.
Okay, so I'm, I'm emailing.
Well, when I put it in as an event, I don't see them in there already. I don't think they're just, so when I'm adding them, I don't, they're not already in the, in the event calendar? Is that what you're telling me?
Yeah, and there's in their calendar.
There was We had a list and then the list changed and then we, so I think then we backed off and so we're just going to put it right. We gave that list to the daily interlink and that created all sorts of issues and so
I know. I agree. It's not going to be all in the end, all that's for sure. I just check it. I but it, yeah, many more people get their information off that.
Yeah, okay. I'm emailing Kat and Brooke to update.
That's perfect, you are.
Okay, so it's already done deal, so again. Okay, now we just have to be sure and mark our calendar.
Do we have to move, do we?
We have to have a motion to, to accept the change.
Well, I leave that Hanson in.
So we got a motion.
And then we started talking.
Now we need to vote. Is there any further discussion? Okay, to change the board meeting from Monday, June tenth to Monday, June third. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A unanimous. All right. Policy review and approval.
All right. I knew this day would come.
Get comfortable.
So this
This is the big
Yeah, this is the House Bill two oh three with the policy three one four one. And, um, we've been through months and months and months of back and forth with other districts and different law firms and I think we have in front of us and what was posted to the agenda. This, as good as we're going to get, um, before we need to, you know, go forward. So really, the highlights within it are on the third page where we look at our criteria that establish in the policy. Number one, students who attended school within the district the preceding year. Um, so we, we go through and, um, make a deadline this year of May thirty-first. So the office will be excited about that because they're really pushing the May thirty-first. Uh, we can, we can make that date whatever we want to. Then next year, we will start the process by April first, uh, but we obviously can't do that this year. So, uh, that's number one. And then number two are the students who are the children or stepchildren of non-resident district employees. Um, third one is students who would not result in exceeding accreditation limits for classrooms and grades K through eight, which would negatively impact the quality of education for all students in the district. This is where it gets kind of tricky, um, because there was some debate back and forth of what constituted that. So the advice I was given was to put that language within our strategic action plan from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-four. And so I did that. And I put it under our second guiding principle, which was curriculum instruction and assessment, um, which is supporting the learning environment. So I, I asked, um, Megan from uh, Bea's office to give us some language to put in there, which, um, which she did and it got vetted and should able to give us a ninety percent level. Uh, the accreditation limits, that does include all of the people who got in first. This would be additional that don't meet the criteria listed here. Um, and then four after that would be students who have siblings attending school within the district. Um, and then five students have previously attended school within the district. The, the rest are pretty, um, you know, standard, straightforward, although kind of rare cases. So within this, what we have to do is make sure that we meet a ten-day decision deadline. And so, um, what, what that means is, is essentially as soon as they are accepted in as an out-of-district, then we have ten days to notify them, the families and also the other district. Because part of this is that the other district is now responsible for paying the, um, out-of-district tuition. So that'll, that'll affect us in a big way because we have about fifty-five to sixty thousand dollars in out-of-district tuition each year that we will no longer receive. But, um, we do have some out-of-district kids that the district will be paying us, so I'm not sure how that's going to work. Um, Mark and his nerd friends are going to figure that out.
There we go.
That's right. It's with love.
Yeah.
Right. Exactly. Whatever you do.
Friends need to rough some people up, like
So the, the other piece to it is that people will have to now apply every single year and prove residency. So it's going to change some of, you know, quite a lot of our families in the process that they're used to. So we're going to really try to get people to, to understand and do that. And it's not something that we thought of to do, just because we thought it would be fun to have the office do that much clerical work, but it's, it's a need right now. And so that's also written in the policy is that, um, out-of-district students shall reapply for admission each school year, which they do. But now it'll be essentially everyone proving that they still live in the district, because if you come in in kindergarten, right? And then you move out and first and you don't tell us, then you could technically, you know, go through, but now you can Sort of clarify with that for me. So if you, if you know, somehow that was my responsibility and I'd like to forget to do that. Yeah. If I lived down the road, then you would still, if you were resident, you would still, if you didn't make that Oh, yeah. Deadline, you could still come to school. Correct. Yeah, no, residents are always allowed in whenever. They can just drop in. And if, you know, they can prove residency, they can come in at any time. And we have to take them no matter what the numbers are too. So. So then back to the, to the criteria here. So you said it's for the accreditation limits, it would be at ninety percent that you could Yeah, that was recommended to us as a reasonable amount, because if you look at some of our numbers, that still gives, you know, a few out-of-district kids who, or excuse me, in district kids who would move in during the year to move in and thus still not reach a number of the, where we would have to look at hiring new staff. And then you, and then we put like with the one, two, threes. So is there I guess, well, I was just wondering prioritizing. Number three first. Would you ever get in the scenario where you? I, I would recommend doing one, two, three as it is here.
Even if it were to exceed accreditation limits?
I think I, I would. The other piece to that too is that we have also within, written in this policy that if at any time capacity limits, like for fire, um, fire code are met, then we can also use that. Um, so Phil, I asked Phil to give us numbers um, for fire code in classrooms and, and also in gyms, lunchrooms and all that stuff, because it hasn't been looked at in quite a while. So that's something else that, that he's doing for us right now.
It's, but I really
Numbers not posted? Uh, they are, I think, in, um, like the luncheon, I think it's posted because it has to be. But in classrooms, it's, it's not, it hasn't been looked at in a long time. And gym is a formula too, the gym space, um, which you, I don't know, Phil could explain. It's where you take one person and their square footage and then square footage of the gym. But then it's the different for bleachers versus floor. So it's, it's a formula. You just, you know, plug and chug.
It's a perfect metaphor for education, all the rules around it.
Yeah. And no guidance. So let's throw some rules in there and then provide, you know, So let's throw some rules in there and then provide, you know, very little guidance from the state of Montana, but.
I think overall, I mean, with all the confusion that led up to this, I mean, I think the policy here.
Yeah.
Makes a lot of sense and reads pretty, you know, reads clearly and, you know, you can follow it down the line and.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I can't even begin to tell you how much it's changed, the advice has changed, you know, different. Superintendents interpreted differently, lawyers interpreted differently, so.
No help from O P I.
Zero, zero. In fact, there was different advice given in the same law firm, with, within the same law firm, different advice was being given, so. I think this is where we, we land our boat, send the troops ashore and then figure out. What to do after that, gotta get to the shore first. Till the next one, but I, I, yeah, I think we got a good policy in front of us, so.
It's been such an interesting journey, I guess, I mean, truly the intent of this bill initially was around rural school districts on the east side of Montana where. You've got fifty miles between the schools and you could be like ten miles from school B, but you're in school district A. I mean, that was so much of what this was about, but how it's rolling out is roundhouse kicking.
Flathead Valley for sure, because we have so many districts within a very small geographical area. And we are in such a, um, I guess, unique situation too, in that a lot of out of district kids want to go here. And so we're, you know, other districts are, you know, losing enrollment and they're, you know, crazy for this bill, because they just want kids to come. And we, we are not, we're not in that same situation. It's really affecting this valley, I think, as, as a non-high school district more than. Than, I mean, it, it would, you would think, because it's just really, really been tough to. To do so in a, in a place where we have, I think, thirteen districts or something within the valley alone, so.
Plus, we're the only district charging out of district tuition, and it cost us at least fifty thousand dollars next year excluding exchange rate. Just so everyone knows, it's another fifty grand out of the general budget.
Yeah, not to mention not knowing how many students we've got.
Right.
Elsewhere that we're gonna be paying out for.
Yeah, yeah, I guess, that, that one's down the road for us, so.
Yeah, because it's in arrears too, so, yeah.
And you have to count on. Telling you that they've actually moved down the district.
Yeah, we're not, whoever does that, right, so somebody's gotta prove that they're somewhere else, somebody. What we know is it's another, it's a fifty, fifty grand out of our budget. So just to be clear, this is the first reading, so this one's kind of a big one, and normally the board will just approve the first reading, and that goes on your next board agenda for these. Bigger things, you've got to give the public a chance to recognize it, and then come back to the next board meeting.
So on that first one, on that first page, it does have the date. The, or maybe not on that first page, it does not, number one, though, it says, subject to the annual June fifteenth. And then on the last page, it has a July fifteenth date, is that?
Think that's our final decision.
Oh, that's for notifying other districts of the tuition, so we get throughout the week, we'll get. Notices from, you know, Columbia Falls or Whitefish, that we have kids coming here. Or excuse me, we have our kids going there, so they'll say, hey, you had, you know, these two brothers apply for out of district tuition. Just a heads up, so that's what we would have to do as well, notify the home district.
And then hopefully then they'll transfer those funds to us.
In, in a year, it's not gonna be until next fiscal year, not, not even this next fiscal year.
They get to use the money, but we have to get.
I think, yeah, I think so, I think that's the way it's gonna work the first year, because it's not even the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. This affects the five, twenty-six fiscal year, and it's a year in arrears.
But we don't get tuition next year.
No, that's what we. It's gonna cost us between fifty and sixty thousand dollars next year.
Not to mention, I mean, it'll be interesting to kind of see, like, is other districts are willing to take kids? And we're not, what does that look like with transfer and payments of like partly through the year and, I mean, it's, it's.
Yeah, because then Brooke has to attract, track attendance as well, because then it would be prorated. For that, so if they move out with six months, then the district wouldn't pay for the whole year, they would just pay for that six months.
And, and what about sped students?
So that's the other caveat too to this, is that sped students would fall under the same category as this.
With additional protections too, like it doesn't even matter if they've, if they've had uh, behavioral issues. We cannot discriminate against that.
That's essentially true regardless of this bill or not, we can't say, hey, no, we're maxed out, we, we, you know. Um, can't service anymore. We have to figure out a way to.
So does this May thirty first start this year?
This year.
So our second reading is not gonna be till after that?
But we're still gonna roll as though it is, because we just have to do something, you know, otherwise we're gonna be in a situation where.
Can we do that as a special meeting before we count our votes?
You really, you could absolutely do that.
Mark, when we, when we know that, that meeting, man, just, oh, this is just the.
I mean, even if we had to do, like, we had to meet to just approve this policy adjourn and then meet. To count the votes.
Just kind of what we did tonight, too.
We could do that like at seven AM and then the next one at like seven ten or something.
Friday, you wanna have a special board meeting with an agenda that includes.
Second reading of. Yeah. Like, usually I have okay ideas. Okay, uh, so, motion to approve the first reading of policy thirty-one forty-one. With the change of the June fifteenth date on page, is it three?
Three.
Um, to May thirty first, and also to have a special board meeting. On Friday.
May seventeen.
Thank you, May seventeenth at seven AM for a second reading of policy thirty-one forty-one.
A second.
Is there any further discussion with that, so, so long as we all know we'll be here for seven o'clock.
Are we able to see the policy prior to the second reading, like, or does it not become a public meeting until?
It's, it's on the agenda.
They don't see that.
Oh.
Maybe just the criteria is what I was more curious.
Yeah, you can see it at any time, yeah.
How do people see that, if they would see it?
Um, they would just ask me, I guess, I don't know, because it varies, you know, by district, so I'm not sure how. Each district would handle that situation.
So they would request that, like, if you wanted, could Mark just forward that to you, to your email?
I can send it to you right now, if like, I mean, it's, yeah.
So anybody who wants to see it, but we could just send it to him immediately, let it be, before that.
Put it as a draft in our policies on our website, because I'm trying to think. I know this is kind of.
Can you just link it in the agenda that you put out to the public for Friday?
In fact, I can go back, I intentionally don't put links here on the public ones. Even though, but it's public information, they just have to request it, right? So we, I can go back, so I, I need a copy of this later, first, I don't have this copy, so if. So send that back to us, and then. I'll link it to this. Agenda. It's in, in our. In our event calendar, and then I'll link it to the one for Friday.
The kicker with this one is that, like, like every time I come to Richard with a question, I get the answer, it's complicated. And it's like, it's the guidance that's been around this has been so. Varying, but then also, they kind of stress limiting how many limitations and things you put. In there so that you don't catch yourself getting caught in a fire, like, that you don't want to be in. So it stinks, just for a while, we were getting guidance that we, it didn't matter, you just had, it didn't matter if you were going over accreditation or anything, you just had to take. Everybody, and, you know, that's so counterintuitive to, uh, you know. Our levy language, our bond language, everything that we, you know, value as a school board and as a school. What we try to talk to taxpayers about, what parents tell us they want, you know, it's that smaller classroom environment, it's not pack it to the gills. Fill every seat, hang them on the walls kind of approach to education, so this is at least giving us a little bit more wiggle room. But. Yeah, there probably been some near tears or actual tears shed around this thing.
Yeah, I don't want to see it again.
Anyway, did that answer, you, you okay? Alright, okay, so, uh. Any further discussion on this? So all in favor, uh, I think we have.
Yeah, I second.
I think we're, I think we're agreed on this, um, to accept the uh, first reading. Of the thirty-one forty-one language out of district enrollment, and then with, with the idea that it will be in the meeting. On, uh, at our meeting on May seventeenth at seven o'clock, we will have our second reading of this, of this bill. Okay, all those in favor of that? Uh, opposed? This, that's unanimous, one more, um, last one, Richard.
And this one is more of a put it on there, because we're, we're done with it, and we're gonna get it on our website, and Laurel actually took this on. Over the last couple of months and worked with MTSBA to try to get some clarification, and um. Realized that, again, there wasn't a lot of clarification to be had, so we're um, gonna just approve the policy as is. And we're not going to.
Well, we had talked about omitting, so the issue that we kind of have is that there's not a lot, a lot of clarification around. What constitutes a visit to a school, and I was unable, at least with Andrew. To, when I emailed legal, to get an actual definition for visit, he says it's specified in the language, but it's. Not really, so. The kicker, I guess, the kicker that I've kind of come up against is that, you know, I, I was told by Andrew. That an individual visit from a trustee should be treated as an individual visit by any, like, just like anybody else. But then that begs the question, why even have this in the policy, you know, and the intent is to prevent. Bad actors or people going behind, you know, the rest of the board to investigate. Which totally one hundred percent valid, but, you know, when we have our admin offices here within the school. And not a clear definition of what constitutes a vision, a visit, you know, and Richard wants to show somebody. The asphalt or someone, like, we get together to draft a thank you letter or levy, levy marketing material, materials, and there's only one trustee there. Does that constitute a visit or not, and it wasn't, you know, they say that no, it doesn't. But that's not clear in the policy, and so, um, you know, the one answer that he did give me was that we are able to omit. Anything in a policy that we don't like, obviously within reason, so. I personally lean towards pulling out the part of, um, let's see. Uh, if the request, let's see. Sorry, I copied this in here, um, individual board members interested in visiting schools without other trustees shall request a visitation through the board and superintendent. The request for an individual visit is approved by the board, which also then I'm like, does that have to be approved? Is that a decision, is that an action item, does it have to be approved at a board meeting? I don't know, um, you know, that we just strike that individual visit piece from the policy. So that's, I mean, that's my druther, but I think we can have discussion around it or go whatever direction everyone's most comfortable with. I just don't want the optics to come and spank us down the road.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I don't see any, you know, if they say we can strike things that, you know. Operationally don't make sense or work for us, I think it's better for us to change those to align with our practice. Rather than just accept, you know, uh.
Link it. Okay, do that then.
So do the motion for me again, here, well. Motion to adopt the policy as written by MTSBA with no modifications, is it that simple?
No, it's with the modification of removing. Um, the portions around individual board members visiting the schools without other trustees. So it's two, it's two sentences, I believe, what I copied is missing.
Do we have the final version of this that's linkable right now? I mean, you've got it with this stricken language.
Well, we wouldn't have that until it was approved in the Chris Goss kind of. We'd have to go through him to do that.
So you're actually motioning to not adopt the policy, you want to go and have it rewritten?
We would adopt that policy minus two sentences.
So we're not positioned about the policy tonight.
It would have to be formally, I guess, adopted, we need a final reading on it, yeah.
First reading, we don't have the policy written.
I guess, technically correct.
Well, no, there's, there's definitely a policy fifteen twenty.
We've been able to adopt stuff in the past without including certain language in it.
Yep, which is the same thing we would be doing in this case, do you want to see what?
Yeah, it's part of a line, which is the unfortunate part, it's halfway through line thirty-three, um, down through thirty-eight.
Oh, you already have the lines.
I copied it in my email to Andrew, but it.
So it would just be accepting the policy with removal of those lines.
It's partway through line thirty-three, through, starting with individual board members. Down through line thirty-eight. Do you want me to email it to you really fast?
Just said that, like, with this one, with, because then what I do is I email Chris Goss and I say, we took out this line. Here through sixteen, seventeen and eighteen, like on this one, and then he goes in there on the official ones. Deletes it and then posts it to our website.
And he could technically, he was out, um, when I spoke to Andrew, but, um, he could technically advise us on whether such visits. Shall be regarded as informal expressions of interest in school affairs and not as inspections or visits for supervisor, like, whether we need to leave that piece in or not. So it's.
You wanna just wait till, I mean, June's right around the corner.
Yeah, we do not need to do this. Yeah, we do not need to do this one.
Yeah, why don't we just, why don't we just, yeah, we kind of have our marching orders. Let's just.
Yeah, we can table this.
For table it, put it on in June and then. You know, we can put it on as a second reading at that point or, or first reading.
Probably the best way to go about it.
Make sure everybody's comfortable with the timing. Maybe we'll have a little bit of final clarification on what exactly.
All right, come with the motion.
Sure will.
Just table.
I think we're gonna table it.
So we have to add a motion to table. We need that motion, right?
I'll make a motion, table model policy fifteen twenty.
I'll second.
Any further discussion on that? Well, hopefully we'll be able to discuss it if that comes to me. Always in favor of of tabling the motion. Aye.
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 Be unanimous. I'll make a motion to adjourn. Any discussion? All is in favor.
Aye.
The last one standing.